Answer you. That's my. Oh, good morning.
Recording in progress.
Record in progress. We'll start our work commissioners' work session. We'll start with introductions. I'm the commission chairman chair this year.
Good morning, I'm Zan Ogero, Commissioner.
Yes, the wild commissioner.
Good morning, Chuck Kirby, County Administrator.
I was crazy like. James Hall with HP. Bill Galatly, Senator. Adam Los, Director of the Department of Commerce. Jerry Nichols, Community Involvement Director. Nick, your proven program and manager of Benton County.
Man, they make the country that was.
Yeah, Wilson, the last hour. David Bill, plus. You're currently in county.
Eric, my board recorder.
And joining us online.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
Sam Imparati, BCT facilitator.
Good morning. Are there any announcements this morning? Very none, we want to review and approve our agenda. There's one change. Four point four will not take place today. And that back in a couple of weeks. And then there's there's a typo on the second page. Six minutes broadband one oh one four point six. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Very none, I'll consider the agenda approved. Comment, we'll go on to comments from the public. Bill Galatly, so why don't you come up to the microphone? Up to three minutes.
Good morning, guys. My name is Bill Galatly, Corvallis resident, mechanical engineer retired in the high tech world. With her management degree from Merrill Hurst University. My purpose today is to encourage you to consider three questions regarding the Coffin Butte landfill. I've been following the reporting in the GT, speaking with members of, two members of the Trash Talks Committees. And then also have spoken with some soil scientists familiar with the local geology. I feel there are three areas that I believe could benefit with at least a better public understanding. With the new conditional use permit being anticipated in the next year or so, I ask you to three, consider these three questions. And each is followed with a couple of sub points. First, has there been a supplier analysis asking questions with the freshness that you would employ if this site were a brand new startup operation? And supporting that, has this player been evaluated for competitiveness, for example, with waste management? Second, sub point being, how does the supplier stack up with other suppliers in quality, technology, or environmental compliance issues? The second question that I would ask you to consider is, have you, have you asked Republic to provide any technology roadmaps? That would address long term problems of water treatment? Or ways to drive recycling issues back to the suppliers? In particular, how do these suppliers plan to reach the achievements seen in the leading European countries? I believe that what we're seeing here has been quite behind their developments. What are the actions that Republic might employ to push back on the food industry packaging, for example? And third, I'd ask you to consider, is there an active or evolving plan to assure that the substantial franchise fee increases? Will assure continuous improvement of operations at Coffin Butte? Might some of the franchise fee increases be tied to Republic meeting improved rates of recycling? In particular, plastic materials back into their supply stream? And might there be incentives based on their ability to influence the food packaging industry? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Great, so we can get that in there correctly. All right, next up. Folks from HP. Give us some information on letter of support. Chips.
Great. Yeah, thank you for having me today. I'm James Tom again from HP. Thank you. You don't know how familiar you are with the CHIPS Act, but I may have to have you advance with this is. Okay. There we go. Thank you, the CHIPS Act, if you aren't familiar, you know, is the Creating Helpful Incentives and Produce Semiconductors and Science Act of 2022. You may have known, Senator Wyden came to HP campus last fall with our CEO to announce that we would like to be going after some of the CHIPS Act funding. Senator Wyden was a huge proponent of getting that CHIPS Act through the federal legislature, and we want to take advantage of that as we can. The CHIPS Act still has not given us the proposals that they want, that we anticipate the request would come out this week for proposals, and our intent is to fill out an application by May of this year. And at that time, we would like to include a letter of support from the Benton County Commissioners along with others in the community. I just wanted to introduce you a little bit to the fact that the CHIPS Act has fifty two billion dollars worth of funding, and so it's a matching grant. In many cases, some tax relief, and so we are also looking at in the Benton County using the enterprise zone here. So let me just introduce you a little bit to the HP campus. For those of you who are not familiar, we did start in nineteen seventy six out in Benton County. Out off Circle Boulevard, we've in our semiconductor factory, we have over a billion dollars in assets, both in the L and B, the land and building, as well as our equipment out there. We do both production and R and D on the equipment, so we're not just a core R and D site, we are an R and D site, we are the main print technology R and D site. The inkjet print technology was created in Corvallis. And we have, we do do production out there as well, and we do it on the same tooling that we do our R and D on. It helps reduce our R and D costs, but also, we believe, makes us faster to the market and our ability to do the work on both toolsets. We have over five thousand patents have been generated out there around this technology. We produce over twenty million print heads every year for inkjet print heads from this technology. We have about three billion in revenue that is a result of that. And we use about a hundred and fifty different materials that cover a majority of the periodic table in manufacturing of these semiconductor and MEMS technology. So thirty years of technology there, but we're really designed for the scalability. So really, what I don't know if you know is that we are the most advanced microfluidics facility in the world. So our ability to produce small droplets, control those droplets, both internal to the chip as well as external is world class, and so that's what enables us to do it. We're using that technology, not just for printing, but for other as well. But what we're talking about today is I'm applying for new advancements. We're working on our fifth generation technology for printing right now, and so that's the main technology that we're going to go after the CHIPS Act funding for to keep manufacturing here in the United States. We're also looking at some other options as well. We're looking at multiple projects. But until the applications come out and we understand what the requirements are, we don't know exactly yet, we have not nailed down exactly what we'll be going for, and so my intent today is just to introduce you to the project, see what concerns or questions you might have, and then we can go from there. What we're asking for is really to be successful. We do need letters of recommendation. We're trying to look at our supply chain risks. You can see we're looking at our workforce pipeline and training programs, so we're trying to make sure that we are attracting diverse and underrepresented groups into our community, because we want to, we believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and ability. Hiring practices in Corvallis, and we want to promote that in our community as well. We also look at good jobs information, which is the wages, the career pass, and our community impact from that, so we're looking at that as well as along with Justice Forty, if you're familiar with Justice Forty, around how we're wanting to make sure that we are inclusive of underrepresented organizations, as well as economically disadvantaged communities, and making sure that we are bringing people in who can benefit from those programs as well. So what I'm, will ask for, not today, but wanted to let you know that I will be asking for that letter of support from you. But we also are then going after enterprise zones, so I'm working with Jerry in the community, in your organizations, to fill out the enterprise zone applications, and we will be doing that probably in the next month. And I'm going through that process, but what I wanted to know today was, while we have submitted that application, what additional concerns might you guys have? I imagine you're going to be concerned about our utility usage, what incremental electrical and water or wastewater will be using or generating as a result of this project, so I can bring some of those specifics back for you. But I wanted to understand if there's other things that you have concerns on. At the same time, I wanted to let you know, which you may not be aware, that HP, starting as our CEO, is committed to being the most sustainable and just technology company on the planet by twenty thirty. And that commitment really starts with our CEO, and you see it come down. I know some of you have come out to the HP site. I didn't invite any others that want to come out and join us. I would be happy to give you a tour out there and give you firsthand view of what we're doing. But I wanted you to see a little bit of what we think of when we say sustainable and just. It's really in three areas. It's climate actions, it's human rights, and it's digital equity. And I just put a few notes in there, impact every day. Over twenty seven hundred trees are planted every day because of HP's work that we do with onet.org, three hundred and fifty two tons of supplies and hardware recycled every single day. There's almost twenty three thousand learners that are enabled with some of our technology, and we spend over one and a half million every day with diverse suppliers. And so we don't just want to, you know, talk about it, we want to do it. And it was shown just Newsweek, just in the last couple of weeks, came out with America's most responsible companies. HP was number one. And so we're really wanting to be great citizens in this community. We want to be great citizens of the world. And we want to walk behind that, but we do have some opportunities here, and we do need some support and help from our community to make sure that we can secure some of the CHIPS Act funding so that we can grow and expand our capabilities here. So with that, I'd love to hear if you guys have any other concerns, because this was an introduction to the projects and see what you might want me to bring when I come back with the application or additional information that you might want.
I have one additional question, and that is with respect to the housing market here in Corvallis and Benton County. I should say the Mid Valley or Oregon, the if we do bring additional people to the area for work, housing is going to be a challenge. Has Hewlett Packard thought about how you as a company might also help to forge solutions with respect to housing issues?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I'll try to make sure that I address, you know, some thoughts we had have.
There is a parcel of land adjacent to your property that's zone high density residential.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
There's a parcel of land adjacent to HP that's so in high density residential. If someone wanted to put a development there.
Yep. You're referring to what's owned by the McPaddens?
Yeah, yes. So so you mentioned working with Jerry Sordi to apply for the
Enterprise Zone.
Yes, the Enterprise Zone, so I believe the benefits of that are for you, like tax incentives, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I would just be curious how that would impact the government by, you know, not getting those tax.
Yeah, the big thing is the federal government is weighing these applications based on community support, county support, you know, city, county, and state support, and so we're going up against many other states that are very aggressively trying to get this funding in their community, and so they want to see not just letters of recommendation, but commitment, financial commitment from the state, which I am working with the state of Oregon as well, on Business Oregon, trying to see what incentives we might be able to do there. But I also know that we're part of an enterprise zone here, and so that would be applicable as well as the enterprise zone and the commerce zone here as well, e-commerce zone.
And the enterprise zone is usually limited in duration, as I understand it.
Three to five years, three years, you can ask for five years. We will probably ask for five years, but it's three to five year abatement.
And then there's a potential for renewal, depending on track record and how many jobs are brought in.
Right, and we have the criteria around the jobs and the wages that we had, you know, that you would want to see, which is a hundred and fifty percent of the average wage rate, and so we understand the criteria and what you're looking for there. And we want to make sure that we're doing that, but I want to address like the housing concern that you have there, which was a good one, and others. Any others?
Yeah, you mentioned jobs. I guess that's your next report, I would appreciate just if you're successful in this effort, what that would, what that would look like.
Yes.
You mentioned the tree planting. What was the reputation Hewlett Packard works with?
I'm sorry.
On the tree planting.
Oh, tree planting, it's onet.org. One, it's there on the slide. I present, I have it in there, it's one, then the letter T.org.
Great, I appreciate going over to Hewlett Packard's sustainability concerns. Is that ties it all with the county's plans and efforts are, so it's nice to know we have some common ground working with.
Yep, absolutely, and just for the record, we go by HP now, when we split legally between HP, when we used to be Hewlett Packard, and then we split between Hewlett Packard Enterprises and HP. We have the HP name, and so we use HP, they use Hewlett Packard Enterprises, so now we go by HP.
Appreciate that, sure.
Yeah, it is. Easier to say.
I have no idea, and then I see one of our friends in the chat put in a question for consideration. How much land do they have, and will it need more?
Oh, that's a great question. We would be doing all of this work with inside the existing buildings that we have, both in some of our active areas, as well as potentially some of our inactive areas, we're looking at both, but it will be within the bounds of the buildings that we currently have.
I had a conversation the other day with a colleague over at Lynn Benton Community College, and they are actively thinking about how, what kinds of programs they need to provide here in the community to support the local economy. So I mentioned that HP was interested in this potential expansion, and hopefully they will be a good partner also in providing employees.
Yeah, they've been an excellent partner, actually, both LBCC as well as Oregon State, we work with both of them. Different types of individuals that we're getting out of both organizations, but doing a lot of joint research with OSU. And with LBCC, we've worked with them around the Mechatronics Program. We've helped them with designing that program, as well as send people out to help teach some of the classes out there. So they've been a huge and wonderful partner for us, and we will, we continue to get interns from them every year, and we actively recruit from there.
Well, and you mentioned give us a tour, and I think you did that last summer as part of Business Oregon.
Yes.
Program, I was in the position of wanting to be in two places at the same time, and invite all out. Early near future, appreciate being able to see inside. You just mentioned there is some vacant space. I don't see much of the current space, and then how this, if you're successful, how this would affect the thing.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, what I'll do is I'll reach out with an invitation to each of you, and then we can work on whoever would like to come out, and we'll work on a mutually workable schedule to give you a tour out there.
Great, appreciate that. Any other questions?
I guess what is your timeline for coming back and asking for the letter of support?
Probably in the next month, or at the most two, we anticipate submitting it in early May. And so I would like to get that letter before that time and the commitment, and we will have applied for the enterprise zone, I would guess by then. Because probably in the next month, we'll have the project spilt out, because we'll know what the true proposal and requests are from the Department of Commerce.
Okay, very good. Well, I mean, overall, this sounds like an exciting opportunity for Benton County and for HP, so I'm inclined to support it, but I will think between now and then, see if I have any more concerns.
Great, thank you very much, and please feel free to reach out, james.tome@hp.com is my email address. So just put a dot between my name and hp.com, and you can ask me any questions you want.
Oh, great, yeah, appreciate getting local take, I mean, we've all heard about the CHIPS Act and a lot of money, and giving down to some specifics is helpful, so thank you.
You bet. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Just a quick, there is a person in the chat, being sure that, sure that they wanted to make public comments, but it hadn't been given the opportunity online to do so. Okay. Debbie Palmer, just putting that on your radar in case you wanted to swing back around at some point. All right, yeah, I did not see that. Debbie Palmer, are you?
Yes. I'm here.
And we'll have this as going back to comments from public, and you have up to three minutes to give your presentation.
Right, yes, I understand, and I will be brief, I just so, thank you, thank you for getting back to me there, I appreciate that. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding that you were going to be hiring an independent third party to help you prepare the RFP for the SMMP. And all I was going to say is that, if that's true, I ask that you please solicit input from the community regarding who that independent third party might be. I think it's important you consider a few different people before making your consultant selection. So that's, that's all I wanted, all the point I wanted to make, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Debbie, and I think that that will be in the record, and we will when that comes up. Consider those comments, so now back to our work session, a four point two COVID update, and there she is, April, so take it away, April.
Good morning, Commissioners, Joe, and everyone present today. Got a little update on COVID nineteen activity for you. Statewide, there were two hundred fifty individuals hospitalized with COVID nineteen as of February fifteenth last week. It's an increase from two hundred nineteen two weeks ago. And an increase since the low of about two hundred three on the fourth of February. Putting it into perspective, our last peak of hospitalizations was in November of twenty twenty two, when three hundred seventy individuals were hospitalized across the state. As of yesterday, you know, we're keeping tabs on how, how often people are boarding in hospitals waiting for a bed. As of yesterday, a hundred fifty three individuals across the state were waiting for hospital bed. This is down from the peak of three hundred fifty five at the end of the year statewide. Still could, could use some further improvement, but a lot of relief from that, that number coming down. Right now, about five percent of occupied intensive care unit beds are filled with COVID patients across the state, and available beds have returned to levels seen before the surge that we saw at the end of the year. That COVID nineteen variant XBB one point five, we've heard so much about, is certainly here and making its way through our communities. And right now, in the region of the country that we're in, Region Ten, in the Pacific Northwest, it's estimated to account for just over half of new infections. Hopeful news is that it doesn't seem to be causing more severe disease relative to the original Omicron strain, but as is always the case, so far it is more contagious as dominant variants usually are. A reported, reported COVID nineteen case counts are currently low in Benton County. You know, with people predominantly using rapid antigen home tests at home, it's estimated that just about five percent of cases are actually reported right now. During the week of February fifth, we had a total of seventy seven reported cases corresponding to a seven day rate of about eighty three per one hundred thousand. Because we know that the reported cases are, you know, they give us a signal of where we are, but we look to other data as well. And we do continue to look for other signs of increase, increasing COVID nineteen activity, including wastewater and the positivity rate. Last week, our testing positivity rate in Benton County was up to sixteen percent, just pretty high, indicating more testing could be done. And that more cases are likely out there, which we know is the case. That's up from about eleven point seven percent two weeks ago. Our latest wastewater monitoring signal, which had been on the declines early December, continues to be elevated after recently showing a sustained increase, so we certainly have COVID nineteen activity here, as evidenced by these, these pieces of data, as well as unfortunately, some increases in hospitalization. here as evidenced by these, these pieces of data as well as unfortunately some increases in, in hospitalization. And I know you've heard me say this before, but while it doesn't appear to be more severe than previous Omicron variants, broader immunity is going to help slow the spread. As we know that a surge in cases will be accompanied by large increases in hospitalizations. And, and, and those deaths will follow those. It's important as ever for folks to get that bivalent booster if they haven't, as this is the best protection, both against an infection and serious illness. Right now, about 28% of Benton County residents have received a bivalent booster, including 83% of residents age 65 and older. When we last met, I provided some some statistics on how, how COVID-19 bivalent boosters provide protection. And we have been distributing those pieces of information out into the community through social media and through partner emails and other means. So right now, being up to date on that, on your booster is the most important thing that you can do to protect your health. Use those tests. They're still widely available. Consider wearing masks in a crowded space right now and when inside. Improve that ventilation and filtration indoors when possible. If you feel sick, take tests and stay away from others. And then, you know, if you do end up testing positive for COVID-19, consider getting assessed for treatments, especially if you have underlying conditions or, or otherwise at higher risk. I wanted to share just to close a, a, a few pieces of information that are known currently about the federal emergency declaration ending for COVID-19 on, on May 11th. You know, during the, the public health emergency, the federal government extended health coverage, long-term services and support and provided extra food benefits. We'll see some of these temporary benefits programs ending and we have seen some have their final, we'll, we'll see some have their final payout very, very soon. OHA and ODHS are working together to prepare for the changes. Their goal is really to preserve benefits for as many people as possible and to ensure that clear direction and coordination of additional resources are available for folks who no, no, all, no longer eligible for benefits. And, you know, there are still things that we don't know about implications of the emergency declarations ending. But I imagine that in the, the, the coming weeks, we'll learn more about specific funding for protections such as vaccines, PPE tests for local public health and whether existing funds may be whether we, we may be able to purchase these with existing or remaining COVID funds that are currently not not allowed to be used for this purpose, or if additional funding may be coming so that we can continue to leverage all of the opportunities that we have, that we may have to continue to reach our most vulnerable population. Thanks. That's all I have for you today. And I'm sorry for being a bit off today. I've got a, a spate of illness going through my, my household and haven't had much sleep with, with kiddos being sick. Thanks.
All right. Do you have any questions for?
My only question is unrelated to COVID. And just briefly, I note that we're going to have very cold weather again this week. So I know that you all are once again preparing to provide for that inclement weather sheltering and I just wanted to acknowledge that. So you are keeping very busy over there in the Health Department.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yes, we, we certainly are.
April, you, you mentioned the importance of the bivalent booster. I think last time you had some statistics. If, if you've had the bivalent booster, you're seven times less likely to be hospitalized and I mean, I wouldn't mind hearing those numbers again if you have them on the top of your head.
Sure, I, I don't have them at the top of my head, but I have them written down here in front of me. So those who have been vaccinated are three times less likely to get COVID in the first place. They also clear the virus faster, reducing the likelihood of onward transmission. In terms of the risk of death, those who have had the primary series of vaccine are seven times less likely to die compared to unvaccinated individuals and 18 times less likely to die if they have received the bivalent booster. And the third piece of information I have is that age-adjusted rates of hospitalization are three times higher for people who were vaccinated, but didn't get a bivalent booster compared to those who did. And those rates are 30 times higher for people who haven't had any COVID vaccine. This is, this is information from CDC published a few weeks ago and it is among the data points that we've been sharing out by various means.
Thank you. And I didn't even notice you looking down at your notes, so you can claim that you have that all memorized. I, they were just impressive numbers and I think, don't, don't be shy about putting those, those out. And a related question. So people that have not had the, the full series or haven't had the bivalent booster, what kind of options do they have for getting that at this point?
Thanks, Commissioner. We, COVID-19 vaccines are widely available in the community. Providers, pharmacies, we still have our amazing partners, Samaritan Health Services has the Sam Care Express locations in Corvallis and Albany, accepting appointments for COVID-19 vaccinations, both the primary series and, and the bivalent boosters.
Well, and, and part of my reason for bringing this up now, spring vacation in most Oregon schools is within a month and, and a lot of people traveling around. So it seems like it, it still might be a great time to make sure you're fully vaccinated.
It's certainly a great time to make sure you're fully vaccinated and up to date on those boosters. Whether it's, you know, we, we attend social situations and work situations. School certainly and, and travel certainly helps to, to spread, spread viruses around. So there, there are lots of opportunities, lots of opportunities for, for conversation as well, whether it's a primary care provider or other trusted medical professional. If, if anyone needs assistance, you know, wading through all of the pieces of information that are out there. We still have our COVID-19 information line available and are, are happy to, to help people out, to ensure that they have trusted information at their fingertips.
Well, great. Really appreciate your updates and hope your family heals up quickly.
Thanks, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Next up, an update from the Benton County Tox Trace Solid Waste Crosses Work Group. Darren Nichols.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy Tuesdays. Nice to see you. Kevin White, Sam and Paratia, and I think Sam has asked to post a bit scheduled little talk from today. First of all, I'd like to clarify, one of the comments that you heard earlier asking about whether or not Benton County would use its third party to select the consultants that help us with a sustainable materials management plan. We have not discussed that. What we have absolutely discussed is that we would need a third party team to help us do the SMMP and we, we remain committed to getting the best possible experts to help with that effort. When it's time, what we do, what we have committed to do is to have the Benton County Tox Trace Work Group help advise what all should be in the scope of a sustainable materials management plan and also the the qualifications and criteria that we should be looking for in any consultants that help us with that work. So I think we're being very open and transparent about the process, but I don't believe we will outsource a third party to help us make the selection. Okay. Okay, with that, I think what we'd like to do this morning is provide an update on the kind of status of the work. So there's been some important kind of shifts in the nature of the work. And I just want to say that from my perspective, we're starting to see the parties, the participants really get closer and closer to agreement. I guess the, as the project deadline starts to loom in front of us, we're seeing a lot of really good conversations, many of those behind the scenes that are yielding some important insights and some areas of agreement that it's taken us a while to get here, but now we're starting to see the participants really engage actively in building consensus. So having said that, I want to turn it over to Sam for, for an update on where we are and next steps.
Thank you.
Sam, are you still with us?
I am still with you. Unfortunately, I'm having bandwidth problems, so I am not sharing my video, but I am going to attempt again to share the current schedule and hoping that you can see that on your screen.
Yes, we can.
Thanks so much. So in a nutshell, over the course of the past week, we put together this schedule that is really being fine tuned, including times that things are doing because we are, you know, circling the runway, getting ready to land the plane as they say. And what happened last Friday was each subcommittee's key findings and recommendations were sent out to them and they have been refining them over the three day weekend, which is an opportunity for me to underscore the amount of incredible work and dedication and time, including over three day holiday weekends. They have put in to get the findings and recommendations in such a place that we will be able to send the, literally in the moment version to the work group this Wednesday, tomorrow, sometime in the early evening. We will also put together a crosswalk document that has the findings and recommendations across referenced. So if Subcommittee A makes a recommendation about topic 13, that has similar importance across other subcommittees, they will be lined up side by side. So we can start seeing the interconnectivity between these various findings and recommendations. On Thursday, our work group meeting will be devoted exclusively to reconciling potentially competing or conflictual findings and recommendations. So the whole work group can opine on their thoughts surrounding them. So then the, the subcommittees can go back between, after the meeting on the 23rd and by March 1st, create refined findings and recommendations and then create draft five. So what we're trying to do here is stabilize the overall report with a heavy focus on the findings and recommendations. The goal then is to issue draft five in its entirety on Friday, the 3rd. But the survey that opens to the public on Saturday and runs through the following Saturday will focus on the public's reactions to the recommendations that are getting close to being finalized by the various subcommittees going forward. On the 9th, there will be a public virtual open house between 5:30 and 7:30 where the various recommendations will be presented using that crosswalk document. And the work group members will be available to answer any questions the public has about them. Ultimately, on the 13th, Monday, the 13th, final draft six will be published with those survey results. So the work group knows how the public reacted to the recommendations. There will be work group polling on the 14th and 15th for the sole purpose of teeing up an agenda so we can triage those that are most controversial to those that are least controversial. And the formal polling will take place at an extended meeting on Thursday, the 16th for the final polling. At that point, on the 17th, staff and I will start putting together the final report. The subcommittees will be available on the 20th through 22nd to help with any I-dotting and T-crossing. Each sub, each work group member will be able to send in their own personal statement about the process and, and the results. And the final report will go to you on the 24th. The final report at that stage will be the word version as compared to the coffee table version. And it will be PDF, but it will not be in coffee table format. We will send it that to the publisher, which may in fact be an internal publisher to work on that during the week of the 25th through the 31st, at which point the subcommittees will meet to prepare any presentation for you at your April 18th initial work session on this. I will get the, the published version over the weekend. And I should just do last minute checks for fidelity of the work group's work. Send it back to them on Thursday, excuse me, Monday, the 3rd, and they will do their final touches on the coffee table version. The work group will meet on the 11th for a dry run of their presentation to you on the 18th. And the, the, the final work group event will be on the 18th, of course, subject to what additional information you want from them. So that's the, you know, sort of the fine tuned work plan. I, it's very aggressive, but it is in fact, I think, doable. We have two sub, the, the public involvement subcommittee for all intents and purposes is done. And I will note in pleasant passing that they were the last to start and the first to end. So a positive note will be placed in each of their permanent records congratulating them on, on their efficiencies and sense of collaboration. The SMMP group is very good, very close to finalizing it. The other three, which are capacity and the legal subcommittee in the past CUP subcommittees have some cross-subcommittee work. And I am in full mediator mode as opposed to facilitator mode, working with the members of those committees who are making major efforts to reach consensus and get as many common understandings as possible per your desire at the beginning of the process. And I, I'm confident we will be able to get there. I'm confident we will be able to get there, but uh we are, some of these subcommittees are meeting several times a week online. And then several times a week internally offline. Uh, to get that work done. And again, I commend all of the subcommittee members. And the work group members for their diligence and uh sense of collaboration. That concludes um my comments, and obviously, here for questions, suggestions. And any other information you care to share.
We have any questions for uh Sam or Darren? I guess uh I would uh echo your comment, Sam, about the significant uh time commitment that that this uh. Uh, work group is has put in. I I've had several comments about. Uh, from a work group member, you kind of uh tricked me into uh signing up and. Didn't tell me how much work this was going to be, but they were, I I think, oh. Little bit tongue in cheek that uh.
She said it with a smile.
Something like that, yes. Oh. So uh I I. Want to make sure the work group knows we appreciate uh um how much effort it's taking to get this far and uh. What it's going to take to uh uh finish up according to the. Uh, calendar that uh Sam just went over.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, um, so in the spirit of full disclosure. Mr. and Friday has given them an opportunity to volunteer for how they want to spend their time. And I think the thing that's the most impressive. Is that the work group members have chosen to make this kind of an investment. You know, we asked for. Uh, minimal level of commitment. They've gone above and beyond our wildest expectations. And that. To me is the thing that is the the most impressive is that they've wanted to work together, including on holidays and over weekends. Um, they've pushed our staff to provide support, which is great. Uh, we are scrambling to keep up with them in most cases. So. If anyone's feeling like that they they're put upon, it's probably because they put it upon themselves and. Uh, we do greatly appreciate it. I just did some back of the envelope math here. Uh, we're well over two thousand hours. In fact. It could be as high as ten thousand hours of volunteer time. So um. At some point, we want to kind of debrief the size of the commitment so that we can appropriately thank those that have participated.
I'll just say in passing that some of the spouses, significant others and partners of the work group members. Are uh wondering why they're spending more time with me than they are with their family. Let's just say that's how bad it is.
Yes, I can attest. So last but not least, I just wanted to shout out to Corey Krogan, uh John Abbe Stokes and Sarah Siddiqui for helping us get ready for the open house. That's coming up now in March. I think it's the seventh or the night, the night. Um, that. Uh, we've had several people ask if we could do some kind of outreach similar to the work that was done prior to the JACOP open house. And um Corey and John Abbe and Sarah helping us get ready for that kind of outreach. So. Uh, just look for that. I also understand that um. Our communications team would like to translate the materials. Into Spanish and American Sign Language, and I believe that we'll have an ASL interpreter uh participate during the open house. Um, so. Uh, I really appreciate our communications team and our um D E I coordinator pushing us to do good work in that way and supporting those efforts. Um, so uh if you have other suggestions, if the board would like to see that done, uh you know, in a particular way or differently or more, please do let us know.
And finally, a shout out to uh staff. Who have also put in countless hours on under the gun of. Uh, pretty crunching uh deadlines for getting the work teed up for each of these subcommittee meetings.
That's it for us.
All right. Well, uh, thank you, and um. But I I guess the takeaway message is, at least for this phase, the the end is in sight and and uh which is. I I think a good thing.
Yes, the uh the mi- the first milestone is insight. Um, the real work, I think, is still ahead with the Sustainable Materials Management Plan and some of our going forward um commitments, but um. Definitely the work group's um work is inside. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
The next up is um. And uh four point five uh updates in the Jason, the Justice System Improvement Program of. Make current and apparently there will be a a video over here.
Commissioners, County Administrator, County Council, thank you. Uh, short JACOP update today primarily focused on the open house that we had recently, but I also want to. Uh, highlight some some dates and milestones. Uh, so these are kind of our our recent milestones uh for review. Um, in January, uh, we actually held our final community advisory committee meeting. Uh, and um he was commissioners arrived uh and made a bond package decision, uh which really propelled us forward in terms of. Kind of final administrative steps and communication. Um, in early February, we submitted a bond measure title, uh and it is currently under review. Uh, today's the final day, so uh short of any protests, we should have our um. Measure number uh at the end of the of the day. Uh, we did have our final adjacent executive committee meeting a little over week ago. Uh, so again, things are kind of wrapping up uh for this phase of the uh program, uh which we've. Called pre-designed loosely uh or conceptual design. Uh, we're moving into implementation, as you know, uh hopefully that will will expand. Uh, um. We did have our open house, which I'll be talking about here in a in a moment. Um, and then later today, Vance will be uh bringing the bond measure and explanatory language. Uh, before you for consideration, uh which would be our our final uh administrative task. Relative to uh filing the the bond measure. In terms of uh remaining milestones, uh so looking, looking ahead a little bit. Uh, of course, we will continue to have, the county will continue to have informational events, uh anticipate uh other hosted events uh in the community. Uh, we will begin submitting uh materials to the Secretary of State for Safe Harbor Review. Uh, that can begin uh as early as tomorrow, depending on the outcome of uh today's bond title. Uh, review period, yeah, uh if it comes to a close. Uh, in April, uh county will uh uh send out an informational mailer. Uh, again, more informational events are anticipated than on May sixteenth, the bond measure. So that's that's looking ahead. The list is getting shorter. So I did want to talk a little bit about the uh. Uh, Justice System Improvement Program Open House uh that we had uh just about a week ago. Uh, before I dive into the specifics, I I want to remind you all that um this was our. Sixth uh large community event uh since we began public engagement for this phase of the program. Uh, that engagement began in about uh mid twenty twenty one. Uh, so we've had three virtual events, uh two hybrid events and our in-person open house. Of course, you know, we did most of this through COVID, hence the 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 formats. Uh, it was, of course, very refreshing to have an in-person event. Uh, in addition, we've uh uh held more than uh fifty uh small uh group presentations, meetings, et cetera. Uh, and those continue. So a a pretty uh uh robust uh public engagement uh. Uh, exercise that has spanned uh uh. Well, will have spanned nearly two years. Uh, I also want to, uh, I'm going to invite uh Coro, whoops, uh somehow I bopped ahead here. Sorry, I wanted to stay on this page here. Um, I do want to invite Corey to say a few words about um. Uh, about the uh press coverage that we received for the open house. Uh, as you can see here, uh you know, roughly two hundred participants uh plus a considerable uh staff, elected officials. Uh, we had seven information stations, eighty-two questionnaires were returned. Uh, want to thank um Lindsay Goodman, who went through all of those questionnaires and prepared a summary, which I I shared with you. Uh, late last week. Uh, Corey will talk about the media coverage and just a general venue and format was well received. Uh, which is reflected in in many of the questionnaires and in some of the comments here that I'll share in just a moment. I also do want to make a very special call out to not only Corey, but uh to Brenda, who may be online. Uh, as well as Joan Abbe, Mariah, Lindsay, and others who were really instrumental in the uh the logistics uh. And the uh greeting and the accommodations uh of the evening that made it so successful. Uh, with that, I'll invite Corey to talk a little bit about media coverage.
All right. Thanks, Nick. I appreciate the opportunity to uh share some information. Thanks for all the work that you're doing. It's uh and others to make this successful and. Get folks the information so they can be informed. Um, I think this was an example of a really uh great awareness and outreach effort when we combine as a team to show uh what we're capable of. We had a lot of information uh picked up and before and after the event. I think the two hundred uh community participants, that's definitely a conservative estimate. I would say it was may have been closer to three hundred. Um, and then really thousands of people saw the information before and after the event. In coordination, uh Board of Commissioners Office was with uh the Benton County Health Department, the Benton County Sheriff's Office. We had this information picked up by uh numerous media partners, including our community radio, K O R C. Uh, K E Z I, K Val, Florence News, the Corvallis Advocate, uh put together photo uh journalism and video products. Um, and a lot of our stuff was ran verbatim, so we were able to get information out there the right way. And uh. We advertised with local media. We had a mailer that went out to all Benton County. Um, just a a good way to make sure that the most possible community members can um see this information again to make informed decisions. Uh, but in addition to that, we had uh social media coverage in the thousands. We sent it out to our listservs and our newsletters. Um, so yeah, again, hundreds at the event, but oh, we really reached thousands of people with this information. Um, so uh hopefully that'll have a positive impact in getting people the right information.
Thank you, Corey. Just a couple of choice comments from uh uh some of the questionnaires that were returned. I won't, I won't read them all. Uh, verbatim, but uh uh did uh. Did share the sentiment of a well organized and supported event. Uh, poster presentations were very effective. Um, of course, the uh the open house format was uh very much more conversational. Uh, and uh that's been a challenge with COVID. Uh, it was great to get together with so many people. Um, uh. Both supporters and detractors, but to have, you know, meaningful conversations, uh answer questions. Uh, that was the purpose of the meeting. Um, and in fact, the uh really the turnout was so strong. Uh, I don't mind sharing the last one, which is a good problem to have, but uh there were at times cues at some of the stations, uh folks wanting to. Uh, to hear from uh subject matter experts, uh and so. Uh, something to maybe keep in mind for for future open house events. There's a lot of interest and a lot of of demand right now, so. I think we're going to queue up the uh the uh video, which is just a short YouTube video, uh kind of a montage of the evening. Uh, and then I would like to invite the commissioners to kind of share their their thoughts and impressions on on the night. And. As well as uh the sheriff. John's, John's making that transition. I guess we could talk, talk now if there's anything you want to share or ask of me. Uh, about the evening while we're waiting for the uh uh video to start.
Well, uh, I I assume this is the last um. Um, large format. Uh, presentation that we're gonna going to have, is that correct?
That is correct. It's the large lar- it's the last large format event. However, there will continue to be uh public engagement. Um, and in fact, uh shortly after the event, I met with uh Brenda. Uh, coastline and kind of talked about some uh possibilities. So uh we're still still looking for opportunities.
And and um. It was, it was really the third one in this series. We had two last all more town hall. Uh, presentations and then opportunity for questions. Uh, I I really appreciated this format that. Um, the um community members that were uh participated could choose who. Uh, different stations uh to get their questions answered and and uh. Uh, at some point, I'd um like the sheriff to weigh in and just uh. Say what is uh what his feedback uh was, but whenever I was here, he was uh. He was engaged back there in the corner, you know, uh. And and just to have uh uh the principal people answering the questions or whether it's our CFO or the sheriff, I I think. Uh. It uh was impressive and showing uh how seriously we're we're taking this and and wanting. Uh, if you want uh good information, here here's the source, not uh filtered or second or third hand. This is uh. Uh, who's who's on the front lines and so. Um, and maybe that was the. The format was uh part of the reason for the great attendance.
We want to watch the video or?
I think we're we're ready.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Corey, for uh sculpting that that video and John as well.
Yeah, John's in the room with us today, so we should give him a shout out, helping us with that.
I would just like to say that the energy in the room was um incredible. I walked in here at quarter six thinking that I was going to be here early. And uh. I was not. Uh, from the moment that I walked in the door, I I had people around me asking questions and that didn't wind down until quarter to eight. So it was a very um. Energized event, and I was really pleased by the level of questions that community. energized event, and I was really pleased by the level of questions that community members had. And the fact that most of them were genuine questions and not just very strong opinions. I did hear a handful of folks that were very strongly opposed to the overall project and bond measure, but for the most part, questions were positive and thoughtful, and I think that we have quite a bit of community support. So it made me feel very optimistic and I left feeling pretty upbeat.
Other comments or questions from the sheriff as well?
I appreciate that, Nick. I just want to thank everybody that's been involved with us from your end with the P I Os, the police information folks. Everybody that had anything to do with this. It was an amazing event. And our work's not done, right? We still have quite a bit of work to do and and so I don't want to lose sight of that either. Well, that was a hugely successful event. We 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 still have more presentations. My doors open. The commissioners are willing to catch up with people. We still have a lot of work to do, but I'm I'm awful optimistic after that event. So thank you very much.
I guess what I appreciate is in in this modern era, we have the event, but we also have the the follow up from B I O and people weren't able to be with us that evening can still get some of the information that was developed at the at the open house. So thank you for Corey, Corey and team efforts before the event getting I thought it was very well organized having I guess seven stations and which for the most part helped spread the crowd out pretty well and we're just having the follow up is is really important for us getting the word out and that we're getting as much we have community input as we can. And and that's obviously important for the many bond vote, but I know this, this has been a five year process and we're getting close to the finish up finishing up this this phase. So I think this was a great, I agree with wish you all that real positive feeling in the room, good questions and it was a nice nice way to wrap up the large type events.
Mr. Chair, I would like to just acknowledge our staff once again. I I can tell you that there were this one night involved months of planning in advance. And the two of our staff members in front of you today amongst, you know, probably a dozen others really put a lot of teamwork into this. And I think you saw that that night. I was just so proud of the teamwork anywhere from our administrative staff to the sheriff's office to just everybody involved. I mean, we did a thing of job on it and I just want to thank my staff. It actually brought tears to my eyes and you guys know how emotional I can get, but I just want to pride. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just I'll add my thanks too. And I think it was just, it was a great event and it reminds me of kind of the public outreach that we used to be able to do at the Corvallis Library pre-COVID. So it's nice that we're kind of finally getting back into that kind of event. I think it is meaningful.
It was our our pleasure and a lot of fun. So yeah. Share the sentiment.
There, there was one comment that I think it's maybe worth emphasizing that probably because of the great turnout, we did run out of cookies. So.
Yes.
Cookies. I didn't even know there were any cookies.
Well, they didn't last very long. No, it was a very well designed thoughtful event and I think it's great that we had had as much turnout as we did and and I think you can say it was 200 people that passed through or maybe three up to 300, but that's a little bit tip of the iceberg. Now those people are better informed, know where to get information and pass the word along to their friends and family. And so it's there, there is a real multiplier effect that I think will come out of this. So great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think I'll call for a five minute break here and next up will be the broadband discussion that will probably take us a little ways beyond 11 o'clock when we're scheduled to start the public hearing. So I would estimate that the public hearing will be a little after 11 o'clock when we get to them, but let's try to be back here. Let's actually make this five minute break, five minutes. Next up on our agenda is broadband 101. Adam Lortz and who are you? I guess go ahead and introduce your colleague that I can't.
The rest of our, the people joining us today are virtual. Colin and Brittany are from Celerity. They'll be joining us. I thought I would just give a brief catch up of where we are on this project. So good morning, commissioners. Good morning, county administrator, county council. In, you know, and it occurred to me, I didn't bring cookies either. So I've so just to catch up on this project in 2021, we worked together with a consortium of counties to bring to bring together a broad, excuse me, broadband action team. And this team was conceived to bring together a project to study broadband access in the mid valley. So essentially in the areas that are covered by those counties. But we also partnership partnered with the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. And it was actually a member of the COG in Whittington that is took up the lead to develop a request for proposals to find a company to provide the muscle to do that study for us. Celerity was awarded that project and they're with us today. This isn't their first rodeo. They've done a couple of these projects back east and so far they've been really great to work with. But today it'll be talking to you about an update on the progress on the project. What to expect from the strategic plan that they'll be providing updates on funding opportunities and other broadband initiatives that are going around Oregon. So I want to keep my intro brief because I know we're a little running behind schedule, but if there's any questions for me, let me know. Otherwise I'll turn it over to Brittany.
Thank you, Adam. Let me pull this up very quickly. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to present. I wanted to thank Adam one more time for all of the help he has given us in arranging this broadband conversation for Benton County. We'll talk a little bit more about our service area, but it's a pleasure to speak to all of you and bring you up to speed on what's happening in broadband in 2023. So we'll talk about Celerity and our parent company, Health Tech Solutions, just a little bit. Making sure everyone understands what broadband is. We'll do a little bit of defining and and talking about the issue in general. It's our firm belief that community should be part of the broadband solution and we'll talk about why that's really important. And we'll also talk about where we are today on our work, understanding what's happening in county and again, Lincoln County and Lynn County. We have a couple of suggestions for next steps that you can all be doing to prepare and I I believe there'll be time for questions and answers. I'll try to keep it under an hour so that we can have time to discuss if desired. So a little bit about Celerity and health tech solutions. Our parent company is Health Tech Solutions. It's a healthcare technology company that was established in 2011. It's based out of Kentucky. And they've been really working on the health information exchanges as a primary, a primary force of work. There has was some work with the Oregon, Oregon, sorry, Health Information Exchange between 2017 and 2022. That work has been wrapping up. In 2020, Health Tech Solutions acquired Celerity, which is another Kentucky based company. And they're really specializing in project management projects all around the country as well. Celerity is the part of the done some previous broadband work again in Kentucky and in some other places. Because of a number of changes coming down from the federal government, Celerity decided to really take a nice and broad look at broadband country ride, starting really in last year, 2022. A little bit more about broadband. We think about it holistically in our approach. So there is mapping needs. There is community education that is needed. The overall project management is really important since these are very specific issues. We won't delve into it too much today, but the mapping is really important because there are pieces that aren't, don't necessarily match up from the FCC maps to the granular information. So we've been working on that as part of one of our key findings. And then if you need assistance in grant management and grant applications, we're there at the ready for you as well. And we'll talk about broadband itself and just make sure everyone understands what we mean by broadband access. Broadband in a very simplistic term is how you get onto the internet. And by definition, we think about broadband access is those always on high speed internet accesses. So you probably have a subscription through a cable company or maybe some other different provider. And that's going to be the key way that you get in on and off the internet. Check your email at this point, watch movies, do work from home. So that becomes the gateway. The FCC is the body that holds the definition for speed in this country. Currently it is at 25 megabits per second download and three megabits upload. And now that's an older definition. It hasn't been changed. But we know from what happened during COVID, at the height of COVID, those speeds were not necessarily fast enough. There are plenty of people who are not getting access to 253 in their home or their business. And that's where the overall concern has started to peak up during COVID especially. There are plenty of people who are not getting access to 253 in their home or their business. And that's where the overall concern has started to peak up during COVID especially. Another federal organization, the NTIA, who we'll talk about a little bit later. They have a desire that all anchor institutions also be wired to a gigabit capacity. So even faster than that 253. That really means that our schools and our municipality buildings, libraries, hospitals are all wired to a gig capacity to make sure that our communities have enough infrastructure to really operate. As I mentioned, 253 is an old definition. There are new grant cycles that are moving that needle forward with 120 megabits per second. 100 megabits symmetrical are starting to be in conversation as well. And if you talk to providers, the ones that are doing the large transfer of information, the big companies were asking for a gigabit capacity a couple of years ago for transferring information in middle mile. And now they're talking about 10 gigabits for that information, just because everything is just exponentially exploding. I do want to note that cellular coverage, which many people use as a backup, if they don't have a stable always on high speed internet subscription, they use that as the backup. For many reasons, it's not necessarily actually broadband access. And so we want to make sure that we're talking about that always on portion of broadband access. And again, cellular coverage is sometimes part of people's solutions, but we want to make, move it to the solution that's always going to be there. There are a couple of different broadband service structures. You might be familiar with some of these. I'll just walk through these really quickly. From the kind of the, this maybe the not so reliable to the most reliable. Many people remember DSL. It actually is copper wire based. And so the information kind of goes sideways eventually, right? So the speeds are slower. They're not as reliable. They kind of fluctuate with the amount that is used. So it is not necessarily the height of technology and it can only get you so far. Fixed wireless is the next step up. So that's usually when there's towers and there's some, some form of signal that is pushed out from that, that tower. They can get faster in speeds, but you really need what is called line of sight. So if you have something on your home that picks up the message from that tower, you're not going to have any problem. It's where there's barriers like trees that it becomes unreliable. And so for heavily forested areas, it's not always a good solution. For places that have hills, also not a really great solution. Cable's the next one. And so cable is a mixture of fiber and other types of cable. They usually run through network neighborhoods using a network. And their speeds are faster and they are, they are more reliable. There's a little bit of a caveat because if you have a lot of houses in one neighborhood using the cable at the same time, sometimes you have different fluctuations in what your, your signal. So it's almost there. The gold standard is fiber to the premises. And that's where you can really get very high speeds. A gig capacity is becoming commonplace a lot of times. And of the, at least the shelf life for fiber in the ground is 20 years long. So it's a good long-term financial bet. Some people say that it's, they have fiber that's been in the ground for a lot longer. But 20 years is kind of that. Like you should be thinking and setting your budgetary restrictions around that. I'm going to add satellite at the very end, but it's probably the one that has been peaking up most recently with SpaceX. But there are a couple of other satellite providers that are commonplace like HughesNet, Biostat. What happens with cellular satellite is because it's continually orbiting, sometimes the satellite is actually further away. So latency, which means the time to bounce back and forth is a little bit longer and a lot of times it's really expensive to have that service even for lower speeds. So just a little bit about the different types, just so you are aware of when people are thinking about proposals in some of these different areas. Why is this a challenge? The expense of building the infrastructure is really where that lies. The providers really depend on the amount of subscriptions to make their investment return to them. And so they really prioritize the places where they can make their business case work. Very often there are fewer problems in urban centers. It's moving into the suburban and the rural areas where you really see and hear about a lot of the issues. And so where that break even point resides, the individuals who live with underneath that area is where we typically hear some of the issues. And unfortunately, because of the terrain and because of the density of population, it is not uncommon to see areas right outside an urban center who have connectivity issues. The other part of this I want to bring up is that we, you know, we can talk about access all we want, but there are two other parts to the issue. It's affordability and also adoption. And so we talk about the three As of broadband. We want to assess, do people have access in the very beginning of making decisions? Do they have even the ability to have a connection be easily brought to their home? Yes or no? Can they afford the connection that is offered to them? There are federal programs like the ACP program that offer abilities for people who qualify to receive funds so that it makes it more affordable. But we want to make sure that people are actually using that as well. And there are other programs that we can discuss as well, but also adoption. And adoption really means that just because you have the infrastructure there, if people don't understand how to use the technology or can't afford the technology, you haven't helped them bridge that gap as well. And so in our minds, each location in your county has a different variance of these three issues. Very often in urban centers, there's less access issues, meaning the infrastructure is there. And usually you hear a little bit more about the affordability problem. If you have a rural community, sometimes it is the access side that is the stressor point. And sometimes you have to fix that access issue before you can get anywhere else. So we really want to make sure that you are paying attention to the different needs in the spectrum of difference in your communities. And again, each community is going to have a set of issues that calls for different solutions. Why should you as community leaders be concerned? I think we have passed a threshold by going through COVID. Where previous to COVID, in some cases, communities really thought that a broadband access, it was a luxury. And clearly going through the last three years, we understand that it is important that everyone has access to make sure that they have the ability to do education as they need. Health access and telemedicine has exploded. Emergency services are now highly dependent on technology and being able to ping anywhere. Let alone the fact that businesses really rely on technology today. So it becomes this real 21st century solution. But we also want to make sure that it's understood as an equity issue. So many of our social services are now done online. So there's many jobs that you cannot apply to that are not posted online. A lot of times you have to apply online for SNAP and WIC and all of the benefits. So if you do not have access at home, you would have to find a different way to fill out all of that information. And maybe you don't even have transportation to those places. So we need to make sure that that is part of how we're thinking about solutions. It was said a little bit different before, but just to reiterate, the providers have stated that the places where the return on investment is clear, they have been served. And so the remainder of the areas that still need to be connected, it becomes a way of creating public and private partnerships that will close the gap and have to continue to be paying attention. We will be talking about the grants that are going to be available. But as you well know, many map grants have matches. And so the match has to come through either from the government, philanthropic means, a little bit of provider investment, in-kind assets, or a combination of all of those things. And as you are grappling with this in Benton County, just know that around your state and, and actually around the country, this is an issue. And so if you would like to look for guidance, you know, Oregon's broadband office does have a lot of information about how they're working at this point. Just to touch on where we are. So Adam talked about Cascade West, working with Celerity and tasking us with the process of creating a broadband strategic plan. We kicked it off in September of last year and we've been doing various forms of community outreach. And so we're just about a little over a third of the way through. And we're going to be kind of making a turn and starting to think about all of the reporting requirements that are going to be coming up now. But I want to talk a little bit more about what we have been doing with the outreach. It's actually folded into an statewide program that is happening right now called Faster Internet Oregon. Our company walked into the process using same software, which is a speed test structure. And so you can take the speed tests at your home or work. Those speed tests are uploaded into a map that we're using for decision-making. And just so you know, the whole entire state is participating in this. You can take a test at home over and over again. I actually sent Adam a couple of different URLs. I also gave a couple of flyers in to be handed out so that there's information about this process. We'll likely be doing another round of speed tests to help us get more information. But this is something that the community can participate and help us out with. One of the things that we've already started working on is what the maps say and what we should be paying attention to. And so this is, this is from the speed test software that we have been using. I hope you can see my cursor, but the speed tests you can see are green. Some of them are red, meaning that they're not fast. So they're probably under 253. The green are above the 253. There are some yellow, which means they don't exactly get all the way up to that 253. So there's a variance in speeds. As you can see, the green, mostly green is in Corvallis. So as I stated, a lot of times those urban centers don't necessarily have an access issue. This actually reiterates that. But what you can see is there's a couple of darkened areas that don't follow the county borders. Over here to the left, that is actually a grant process that was just awarded to Pioneer Telephone. It is through the USDA. It's the reconnect program. And so that territory that kind of goes between Lincoln County and Benton County was awarded in the fall and they will start building out that whole entire section sometime in the near future. It's an investment of $25 million into servicing those areas. So there's great work that's already happening in the area. We're helping to catalyze a lot of that information. Down here is another, this is a Monroe Telephone Company. It's a protected area again through USDA. So we're making sure that that area has a great coverage. As we're talking about broadband strategy on the long term, our, our understanding is that we need to be focusing on the areas that don't have this natural solution. So if you're following my cursor, you can see the areas of concern and we'll start working on that a little bit further. And why I think this is an important moment, I'm sure many of you are aware that the Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act did pass in 2021. There's that historic once in a lifetime investment that is going to be flowing down to the tune of $42 billion allocated nationwide for broadband access. Right now Oregon is, has already received $5 million for the, the planning process. It is slated to receive and roughly $550 million for additional infrastructure related grants, which is a huge investment. There's also about $780,000 for digital equity work. So think that affordability and that adoption piece that I was speaking about. The next slide I'll go on to this a little bit more, but these funds will not start flowing down to the granting process for another year, likely mid 2024. And so there's other things that you could and should be looking at. In Oregon, the broadband office is going to be overseeing the Capital Projects Fund. That's ARPA related recovery dollars. They're separating it into two pieces. There's a technical assistance grant piece, which really means the helping communities get the pre-engineering work off the ground for some of those larger projects. We have heard that it's going to be, the grant process will be open sometime in spring 2023, really depending on some decisions that are made at that state level. The remaining dollars that are inside of that Capital Projects Fund pool, which is about $120 million. The remainder will be offered as infrastructure grants. It will likely be slated to be opened in the fall of 2023. There are other funding opportunities. Pioneer is taking advantage of USDA reconnect. The next deadline for that will be in, in November. There are a couple of different smaller pools of fund. Actually the work that we're doing is through the Economic Development Authority, the EDA. You can use EDA funds for broadband pieces, but probably in little smaller sections. I always like to bring up ARPA dollars. So of course communities from the, from towns, counties and, and up all had the ability to use ARPA dollars. One of the allowable expenses has always been broadband. And so thinking about if there's any unallocated ARPA dollars flowing around, just think that that might be something to think about. So that again, talking about that, the Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act. This is again unprecedented scale work on infrastructure. So there are a number of pieces of planning that each of the states is going through at this moment. If you look at the timeline, the funds were received by the states in the fall of 2022. And so there are these two pieces, the, the BEED five-year plan and the DEA five-year plan that have to be put together. Those are not due in most cases until late summer, fall of 2023. Those have to be approved by the NTIA and, and then the next steps happen. We are hearing that um, the BEED funds. Um, the government says they will make decisions about how much each of the states will be receiving by June thirtieth of this year in twenty-twenty-three. At that point, there is the, the states have to um, present a plan to the NTIA. For how they will allocate those in sub-grants. Out and they have a certain amount of time that they have to turn that plan into the government. Um, so we, we know as far as the timeline, we will not, uh, we won't be seeing the grant processes opening up. Sure, until twenty-twenty-four, most likely mid-two thousand twenty-four. So in my estimation, this is a real great time for counties and communities to be preparing. And why should communities be preparing? Um, this is a simple quote and it really speaks to the heart of it. In terms of the incumbent. It doesn't make any sense for them to deploy networks where they're not going to make profit. But at the same time, cities have a responsibility to their communities. So do towns and so do county level representation. And so it's really important to make sure that no one is left behind, especially as. So much of this funding is becoming available for the very first time. So you know, what can you do uh, preparing um, prepare for these infrastructure builds? They are going to be multimillion dollar. They are going to be multi-year. Um, us understand where the coverage is today and we're certainly working to help give you a good amount of clarity on that. But as things start rolling along, um, prioritizing it, especially at the county level for areas that have. A good contingent of rural areas. If you have a point of contact at the county level who will be dedicated to that issue. It makes things a lot easier, even in the circumstance that you're in right now. You have more than a handful of providers who are giving um, access to broadband to your community members right now. Making sure that you have good relationships with them now is really important. There are strategic conversations that you can be having to build matching funds. Um, you know, obviously the county is one place that those funds could come from, but there are a number of different places. From um, private partners like large organizations, large businesses who might have foundations. They're using a lot of that technology to drive their business enhancement. Um, in other areas, the um, the healthcare organizations have been able to put a little bit of funding into. Um, a project as well. There are a number of different ways that you can think about getting those dollars put together. Think about that technical assistance piece. So Adam talked about the regional level broadband action team. Some uh, places in Oregon are moving to a county level bat team. Uh, just to make sure that there's more strategic planning happening closer to home. And I did mention that, that technical assistance grant. Um, our work aligns with the level-one projects and they go up in tiers from there. So there are different, there are different levels of technical readiness that you could be approaching yourself. So going back to what we're doing and what we're doing next, um, part of our activities are to. Um, make recommendations about broadband grant funding in the future. So we will be delivering that to Cascade West. And the, the constituents that are really supporting the work on the county level um, and in March. We are continuing to do outreach. We're kind of doing a little combination of um, what our county-level representatives. Need and want versus what we know we need for our report. So you might see another speed test push. You certainly are going to see a round of surveys go out. And so we are, and we are here to have longer conversations. Um, so look for that information. We're going to get to the nitty-gritty of the mapping and we. Our process includes a rapid design study, which is not a full engineering study. But it gives you really good understanding of what's um, what it will, what it will cost. To close the gap in certain areas of concern. Uh, and our contract has us working all the way through October when we will be delivering the reports. And so again, we're kind of a third of the way through. Um, so there's certainly a lot more that we'll be doing in the future. What are my recommendations for Benton County leaders to do next? Um, continue to partner with Faster Internet Oregon, uh, push the speed tests. Uh, there's been a lot of, of outreach to the schools to make sure that families have been uh, participating. Uh, we've been trying to do outreach to different community organizations to see if they could help with speed tests. Continuing network is important. I'd like to stress that uh, investing in broadband and is investing in your community. So thinking about how um, you know, these, these projects are going to be invested in. By a number of different pieces of your community. It's really important. Um, look underneath the hood and try to find out if there's any dollars uh, floating around. You know, are there any unallocated ARPA dollars? Um, you know, I think there was a bonding process that was in one of the early, earlier um, presentations. Um, there are more communities talking about bonding as an option for closing that gap. Start to get familiar with some of the other ways of funding these structures. If there aren't grants that are available, but. Uh, just honestly, there is a huge pool of funds that will become available, especially around the Infrastructure Investment Act. Um, but because it's nationwide, it's going to be extremely competitive because the Oregon pool is going to be state. Level, it still will be competitive. So you will still have to be thinking about different options for closing those gaps. Simply prioritizing broadband as an issue at the county level will make a difference. And if it becomes a part of conversation, that will be really amazing. And again, that collaboration uh, between different organizations. Um, will really pay off in, in spades in the end because. Your hospitals will benefit from the, the connectivity. The individuals who are using the hospital resources at home for telemedicine and maybe aging in place. And maybe they can't get um, to certain specialists, but they can through telemedicine. It's really going to change things in the future. And so making sure that every single resident in your community has that. Capacity, it will be really very beneficial. Uh, and just very simply, this is the moment that we will be able to. Uh, set ourselves up for the rest of the twenty-first century. You know, many people talk about this as the. The electrification of the United States. This is our project for the century. And so making sure that you have all the tools at your disposal for this work will be really essential. Um, I hope I didn't take too much time because I know, I think it's right about um, about time, but I just wanted to pause for questions. And um, make sure that you have in your packet, you have my contact information. Um, again, uh, there are, um, Adam will probably send you some more information, including a handout. Of um, of talking points that you can be sharing with other elected officials. And I'm happy to answer questions.
I have, have a couple of questions. Um, we clearly have a gap area i- in Benton County overall. But uh, equally, uh, I'm concerned about the caliber of the coverage even within Corvallis. Uh, it's pretty uneven. Um, and uh. Uh, so how, how engaged has Corvallis been so far in this uh, contract with Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments?
Uh, if you mean the city of Corvallis, they're not a part of the broadband action team, but we have put them in through our efforts to communicate out to the community and they've helped with some of that.
Okay, I, I view them as a critical partner in moving forward, um, because uh, the vast majority of the population is in um, city limits or. You know, and then that urban growth boundary area and um, I think that that's where we need to do a lot of our work. That's where a lot of the services are provided from. Um, and so all of the, those anchor institutions and other um, businesses and hubs need to have adequate service. And um, I also think it's going to be a matter of economic competitiveness. If we don't have that level of service, we're not going to be able to. Support the HP build-out, for instance, or anyone else.
Yeah, agreed. Um, real quick, if I could, Brittany, one of the things we hope to learn from the study in the beginning is not just availability, but options. And what does availability or what the availability of the options are to each consumer. Uh, making sure that um, they have a choice and that competition should bear better choices in the future. So that's one thing we also hope to learn. Um, I have to admit that this particular study isn't focused on urban areas so much and it's difficult to extrapolate data from. Urban areas compared to rural areas because essentially one connection might represent an entire apartment building, for example. Uh, so uh, this particular data set, I think, is going to help us understand the rural uh, aspects of broadband availability better than urban. Uh, but there are, there is uh, information that we'll learn out of this process that can help with both.
And a couple of um, elements where it does cross over into the urban center. So. We were requested by the, the, the point people for each of the three counties to work on a. Business-specific survey, uh, because they had a very strong feeling that businesses across each of the counties and urban and rural areas. Um, were dissatisfied with the amount of speed that they were able to um, receive for running their businesses. Um, so uh, we will be running that specifically. Um, if you, um, going back to the quality of services in Corvallis. If there are areas of concern, uh, one of the first thing that you can do is make sure that they are taking speed tests. And that gives us the ability to uh, to analyze the speed test information. We, you, the color coding will instantly tell us where potentially. Some of the uh, infrastructure needs to be updated and we can take it specifically to the providers. Um, each of the speed tests, it names the provider. And so we can have that conversation about the quality. Of the infrastructure that is in the ground at this point. Um, but to Adam's point. Um, the overall broadband strategy will be about closing the infrastructure gap, gaps. In between the urban centers because there is so much infrastructure built out. But do know that we're not forgetting the, the city hubs themselves in this process.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I had a, a couple of questions in, in uh, comments. I, I appreciate the emphasis. This is a real. Uh, opportunity of that we have been kind of talking about for several years about mapping and hopefully this. Uh, this time for sure that uh, um, people will. Um, pay attention and, and. Test what they currently have and what uh, what we, what we should have. Uh, question, uh, there was the acronym BEED.
Yes.
I didn't find where that was uh, written, written out.
I probably have it written out in the handouts, but it is broadband, equity, access and deployment. BEED.
Great. Uh, thank you and um. Well, again, just uh, this is um, a real opportunity. If I understand correctly, i- is there a formula that uh, states will receive? Uh, money from a large pot, I guess, of forty-five billion. Or uh, I, I heard the word competitive, but uh. The way I understood it, uh, the state got the money and then, then the competition between uh, within Oregon. Um, starts. Do I have that correct?
Yeah, yes. So I'll, I'll break that down a little bit. So um, the Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act. Um, allocated forty-two billion countrywide to broadband. The formula does break it out so that each state gets five million dollars for the planning of all this work, which Oregon is working with now. Uh, the amount that each states, uh, each, each state receives for the infrastructure piece is. Based off of, of the federal mapping procedure. Uh, right now, best estimates that Oregon will be receiving is five hundred and fifty million dollars for that infrastructure build-out. Um, and that's not set in stone because they're crunching the numbers right now. Um, so that is that pool of funds. The Capital Projects Fund, Oregon already has. And that is a separate amount of dollars from the US Treasury. That would, that was um, put together as a process for recovery as well. So it's part of ARPA. Uh, through the Treasury, each of the states received a certain amount of money. Um, from what I understand, uh, there is one hundred twenty million dollars for broadband that the Oregon Broadband Office is using. Certain amount will be used for the technical assistance piece and the remainder will be used for additional infrastructure build-out.
A couple of things to commissioners is the uh, Oregon State Broadband Office was expanded to help address this issue. Uh, so I know they have a, a larger committee also working to learn how we can divvy out the funding from the federal government to our counties. Uh, so we'll be learning more about that as the months go by. Uh, one other thing I wanted to point out is the mapping that we're doing now. Also has a side benefit of being a living document moving forward. So we can look at broadband as sort of a utility. Uh, and as a county, we'll have that asset to own and track and understand how we're serving the community with broadband. So it's a side benefit. All this mapping activity that's sort of filtered all the way from the FCC down to our county GIS technicians. Which have been working very hard to sort of uh, vet some of this information. The fruits of those efforts are going to be a nice new uh, resource for us to track that information to make sure we're serving our constituents.
Great. Well, uh, and I, Brittany, I appreciated at the start that you defined broadband. Uh, that, that seems uh, it, it's a word that's. Uh, been used and I, I think I would be hard pressed to uh, to have defined it. So uh. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, yeah, I. Uh. I guess like question for you, Adam. Uh, what's the relationship between uh, your department and Cascade West? And a- as far as uh, moving forward on uh, some, I assume some of these grant uh, applications.
So I'm a sitting member on the broadband action team for the region. Uh, Oregon Cascades West is taking the lead on the RFP process and working with Celerity and developing the strategic plan. But that broadband action team will exist past this project. So we'll, we'll be working with the plan. Uh, developing strategies to implement. And then of course, working with you guys when we need to come back and talk about match funding to take our grant opportunities. That team will work together to make sure that we have sort of one voice when we come to talk to you and the other county leaderships and city leaderships. So. That's, I think, where, you know, this was just a catch-up for you guys. It's been several months. Since the award of the uh, project. I think we've had a lot of great learning opportunities. It's been an interesting adaptation as we learn things that come and change from the federal government. We've kind of had to adapt along the way. And understand to speed up some sections of the project and weight on other parts of the project. Uh, but Celerity's in a great job and really excited to continue the work with them. And. Um, so the role moving forward for me is to really continue to participate on the broadband action team. I have to pull in resources from my department on occasion to provide information back to the team likewise for the other counties and cities. So. Um, we'll keep moving, keep working on it hard and make sure that we're ready for the funding opportunities when they come down.
I have a follow-up question there and that is, um, have you also been able to do some of that external uh? been able to do some of that external uh networking and relationship building with providers in the community? And, and are they all, I know that there are some in the audience. Um, but uh, that's the other piece. And I know that we occasionally, as commissioners, get contacts from some of our um, local uh provider community, but not with any regularity. So I'm not sure uh, what our level of connectivity is there.
So yeah, outside of um, the regional broadband action team, with those meet on a monthly basis, and uh, a lot of providers are involved in those meetings. So it's um, they have a voice there. We also uh, I've been keeping all of those entities up to date on this process. And we're invited here today, and uh, they're aware of our efforts to get out the information about getting the speed tests done. Uh, so it's been good actually to make some of those new relationships. Um, and I think um, the broadband action team will keep that communication going.
Thank you.
And yeah, speaking of communication, I, I hope uh, our PIO is uh, involved in this. Cause it, uh, again, and it's uh, how to get the word out and um, do the test, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't um, as far as I can tell, there aren't any uh negatives to it. So it's uh, and, and the more uh, people that uh, do the test, the better information we have. And I think that probably improves our uh, position for uh, in the competitive brand uh, arena.
Absolutely. Corey and John have been great. Anytime I've needed to throw them something to get out on social media and get out through all of our communication channels, they've been around on the spots. It's been good.
Great. Uh, I really appreciate the update. I mean, we've been uh, talking about the mapping for several years and federal monies out there and, and to uh, kind of get caught up on where we are currently and, and I guess going forward and um, kind of regular uh, updates on uh, what uh, where we are and what we need to do to um, get in the game, keep being in the, in the game. Cause uh, I, I think it's um, the, this is one-time funding and uh, so uh, get on the bus, get on the boat, or uh, you know, we will be uh, left behind. And uh, as someone that lives in rural Benton County, I appreciate, uh, I know the history of how we got power, uh, electricity later than the urban areas. And, and uh, same with telephone and to me broadband is, it's right in there and uh, well, pick a timeframe, but in, in the past, it was uh, a luxury and uh, has COVID proved. And it, it's essential, uh, it's essential for um, doctors' visits, uh, school. And just keeping in touch with uh, friends and family. So um, I guess, don't be shy about coming back and letting us uh, giving us uh periodic uh updates.
We'll do that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Salarity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Uh, all right, I think we will um, recess the uh, work session and uh, take, want to take a five-minute break before we start the public hearings are ready to go.
Either way.
Uh, why don't we uh, move right on to the public hearings? Oh. Uh, first up is um, public hearing number one in the matter of uh, public hearing and potential first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three days. Zero three one eight revised Benton County Code, chapters four, five, and six. And uh, I saw James Morales there, ready to um, take us through this um, process. Uh, do I need to read the script here? Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, welcome, James.
Well, thank you. We gotta be careful about touching this. Real sensitive, isn't it? Uh, good morning, Commissioners, James Morales, Benton County Clerk and Records and Elections Department Director. Um, for you today, I've um, mainly got some cleanup. Might be uh, uh, similar to a cleanup bill at the legislature, but we did identify a couple of areas of uh, concern for the process as well that could be addressed in updating the uh, the code and as well as another uh, item on your agenda that I have today for the ranked choice voting rules. Uh, in uh, chapter four, there's only one change being proposed, and that was a change that uh, that we had missed actually the last time that we had uh, updated the county code in twenty-nineteen week. Um, we updated the deadline for filing of measures, but we uh, missed the updating of the, of the candidate filing for a commissioner to have the seventy, seventieth day aligned with the state statutes within that code. So that's what this is. That's the lone uh, update to chapter four of the code is to get that cleaned up and aligned with the other deadlines. Now in, whoops, got the wrong part. Got a lot of papers here. So for chapters, any questions on chapter four, so why we're doing that? Then for chapter five, which is in our measures section of the county code. The update there was with regard to the advisory measures, which is unique to Benton County. Where I had proposed that we put this in our code, because there, there was an instance way back in the past where we had an advisory measure that went out to the community, but we didn't have any guidance on that. So um, a- another thing that uh, came out of the ranked choice voting process was I, I thought, well, what better of a tool for county government than if we needed to go out and seek the opinion of the community to have uh, ranked choice voting advisory measures? Well, now with the implementation of ranked choice voting, possibly expanding throughout the state, my concern was the actual space that a ranked choice voting contest or advisory measure, as the case might be in, in this instance, takes on a ballot. So narrowing the elections to the uh, other three elections in the two-year cycle, besides the primary, general, and special districts elections as the election dates available to local government here in Benton County for advisory measures. And so that's the lone change in chapter five is to clarify that this, these three dates in the two-year cycle are the dates available for advisory measures. There's no state statute guiding this. We're guiding it all by ourselves here in Benton County. And, and that's kind of the red flag that went up. And I said, maybe we should address this now, kind of try and get ahead of it a little bit uh, before we see one of these advisory measures, because I know that it's been considered as a possible option in, in the past, and wanted to make sure we address that. Any questions about that? Chapter five. Then in chapter six, with regard to the voter's pamphlet uh, distribution, wanted to make it a little more clear and less restrictive on our ability to get information out to voters through various means. Uh, we have in the past been in a budget restricted time where we distributed the voter's pamphlet strictly electronically, or, or making it available like on our website and emailing it to voters that uh, didn't would, would like so, or printing it out just here in our office and making it available here. Uh, ma- mailing those individually to voters that didn't have access to the internet. Um, so we've, we've tried to address it in various ways. Besides household mailing, sometimes if we have a small election, we prefer to just place pamphlet in the actual envelope, the ballot envelope being mailed to the voter. So just giving us that flexibility is the intent of, of the changes here in chapter six. There were, Vance had a question about some of the required information. I um, stated that it was redundant, it was still required. So we removed the one section in um, the language requiring Benton County Code, Section Six Ten language in the voter's pamphlet, where Six Ten would still apply. And I think that was it. Yeah. That was the only changes. So like I said, it's a lot of cleanup, just trying to get ahead of things and address potential issues before they become issues.
Have uh, a question.
Sure.
Um, I was reading through the rest of chapter six, and in particular, there are two um, clauses that stand out to me, six-point-three-oh-five-two-B-two and six-point-four-oh-five-two-B-two, which state that the election office shall reject any argument to be included in the voter's pamphlet, which incites, promotes, or advocates hatred, abuse, violence, or hostility um, toward or which tends to cast ridicule or shame upon any person or group by reason of race, color, religion, or manner of worship. And I think um, given today's fraught relationships over gender and transgender rights, uh, I, I think we should be including gender. I don't think we should be um, limiting it to the list here. Either that or just refer to state statute on uh, anti-discrimination statutes, rather than having to list everything in our own code, just refer to the state law.
Okay. Vance, would you have a recommendation for how we should work that?
Actually, I think Commissioner O'Drill makes a, a good point. I, two things, one, I, I'm not sure, but I'd bet a dollar this mirrors either state statute or OAR. That's one thing. Second is, I, I do believe, Commissioner, that the, the second line says, which tends to cast ridicule or shame upon any person, doesn't specifically call out gender, but I think that is broad enough to capture your concern. If, if you'd like us to, you know, be more specific, I think uh, in that case, I would, I would ask that James and I take a closer look at the state statute that OAR, to make sure we're not diverging from what the state requires. Uh, but that's certainly something we could do.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, I would just add that while, yes, it sounds like someone will be included in that. Um, I think if we want to call it out, that would be a reflection of our values. And so do we want to specifically reflect that value and call it out?
So if, if that's the direction um, on chapter six, then once you go through public testimony, then I probably recommend that if you have no objections to four and five, that we move forward with the proofing those, continue this hearing to come back with any changes that uh, address your issue on chapter six. And I think, James?
Is it possible to say we can add gender to those sections uh, to sub-two or B-two?
I, I, I think I would want to make sure what the statute and the OAR say first. I, I, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but I want to be, I, I think for, for both of us, I would want to look the board in the eye and say we're a hundred percent confident.
Very.
So I, a couple of questions. Uh, Commissioner O'Drill, were you, was that chapter in the packet that I missed, or were you looking at the counties?
It was in the chap, it's in the packet.
Okay.
It's on page one oh-six.
Okay, thank you. We have like three different packets and um,
It's in the main, in the body of the main packet.
Okay, one oh-six. And I do appreciate the um, sort of the list of everything that you have with the green. I assume the green was the additions. That was very helpful to see. Thank you. Okay, yes, I see that. It just threw me off because they were separated in the packet.
I have no further questions.
So we have a motion in the, I will get
uh, public comment.
Oh. At, at this time, uh, is there any member of the public that wishes to present general testimony? Um, this is uh, your opportunity. Hey, uh, is there anybody online that wishes uh, to uh, um, do uh, public testimony on, on this uh, matter? Is there uh, any testimony from representative of any other government body? Either um, in person or online? All right, I assume there's no staff response, because there hasn't been any um, testimony, public testimony? Now we're so we, we can go ahead with uh, chapters four and five. Is that correct, Vance?
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at um, our ordinance carries all three of these. Um, and it makes it a little more difficult to just pull one out. So I would recommend we push this off, continue the hearing for another two weeks and come back with any changes that uh, we have. And that way we can do all three of them, once they're all on the same timeline. You just have to grit your teeth, James. Two more weeks.
How can that one be, or March seven, important?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be easier next time.
Thank you.
I will close the first public
We, we, we'll continue it till noon on March seven, excuse me, eleven o'clock. Eleven o'clock, March seven, right here. Uh, that public hearing will be continued, Erica. So it will still be listed on the agenda as a public hearing continuation of this one.
Right, thank you. That's, that's what I meant to say, Vance. All right, uh, next up is uh, public hearing number two. In the matter of a public hearing regarding an appeal of planning commission land use decision regarding LU days twenty-two days zero-two-three uh, Jordan. And you, you can't leave, Vance. Um, uh, Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three at uh, eleven-thirty. It is, is the time set for the public hearing in the matter of consideration of the denial by the Benton County Planning Commission for farm help, for a farm help dwelling, or a relative on EFU land. Benton County Case Number is LU days twenty-two days zero-two-three. And so I keep reading. All right, the applicable substantive criteria upon which this case will be decided are found in the Benton County Development Code, fifty-five days, not days, we one-two-zero, fifty-five point four-zero-five, ninety-nine point eight-one-zero, and ninety-nine Ninety nine point eight one zero and ninety nine point seven zero five. All testimony, arguments and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed towards the approval criteria. Or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy that you believe to apply in this case. The applicants have the burden of proving that all of the relevant approval criteria have been met. The hearing procedure will be as follows. One, the staff planner will present the staff report. The appellants will then present their case. Free testimony from those in favor of the appeal, four testimony from persons opposed to the appeal. Five testimony from any representative of any other government body and uh six rebuttal by applicants. So I keep going. Okay. If there is no request for continuance, no request to hold record open and no request to submit written argument by the appellants. The public testimony portion of the hearing will be closed. The record will be closed and this body will deliberate and make a decision. The entire record before the Benton County Planning Commission has been placed before us and as part of the record. For uh each for this hearing. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed expressed the same thoughts, it's perfect perfectly acceptable to state that you agree with. The statements of the previous speaker. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must be formally. Be placed in the in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please leave the material with Erica Milo. Who will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. Finally, I will ask the board of. I I will ask the board if any commissioner needs to declare any bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte contacts. All right, uh first up, uh staff planner will present the staff report.
Thank you, commissioners. The community development department received this application for an accessory farm help dwelling relative of the farm operator on March twenty first, twenty twenty two. The application was reviewed administratively pursuant to Benton County Code fifty three point one six zero. After staff reviewed the application materials, the community development department denied the application. The decision was appealed to the planning commission and the commission got denied the appeal of the department's decision thereby upholding. The denial of the application. The applicants appealed to the appealed the planning commission decision to the board of county commissioners. The initial staff decision and all subsequent appeal hearings have met the requirements of the county code for notice and advertisement. The applicant's appeals have been timely filed and met the substantive requirements of the code. The appellants, appellants for this public hearing are the applicant Cynthia Crosby and the property owner John Connie Jordan. The applicant waived the one hundred and fifty day deadline for a county decision on the application on July nineteen, twenty twenty two. For the full two hundred and fifteen days, which makes March twenty first, twenty twenty three, the final state mandated deadline for all county based appeals. The subject property is approximately one point seven miles south of the Philometh County city boundary. It contains sixty four acres and is owned exclusive farm use. The surrounding properties are also zoned exclusive farm use. Cynthia Crosby is identified as the farm operator. Ms Crosby's daughter and son-in-law Clara Fulcher and Kevin Fulcher are identified as relatives who provide help to Ms Jordan and Ms Crosby. Staff reviewed the application and supporting documentation for compliance with Benton County Code. And the findings and conclusions to the code criteria are found in the original Stafford Court. Staff concluded that the application meets all criteria except Benton County Code fifty five point one two zero per N one per N B. This relevant section of the code reads, the relative's assistance in the management and farm. Use of the existing commercial farming operation is required by the farm operator. This conclusion, staff's conclusion was reiterated in subsequent memos for the planning commission public hearing and this board of county commissioner public hearing. The planning commission has also found that the applicant's request does not comply with Benton County. Code fifty five point one two zero per N one per N B. The department's decision rested on two issues. When is farming a commercial farm operation and how does the term required apply to the applicant's stated need? Farm use is defined as the current employment of land for the primary primary purpose of obtaining a profit in money. The appellants only to identi- identified farm uses that create income are the breeding of Dexter cattle and the raising of hay. Other farm activities on the property include horse boarding for personal use, an apple orchard, and a vegetable garden. To assist with the review, staff utilize the objective criteria established by Luba to determine that the applicant's. Appellants operations do not rise to the level of commercial farming operation. There are three standards that Luba uses to establish if to determine if a farm is a commercial farm operation. That to easily determine this. One is, does the farm up, does the parcel size meet the minimum parcel size required for an exclusive farm use zone? In this case, the farm, the parcel does not. It is sixty four acres. Our minimum parcel size is eighty. The second and the third um are based on the income of the property and that is the eighty thousand dollar minimum income. Gross income. One is um based on it, would it meet the requirement for a primary farm dwelling? Or would it meet the requirement to qualify as an accessory farm dwelling? In either case, does this operation rise to that level of income? Since it did not meet those standards, we also, we then looked at what a commercial. What the definition of commercial agricultural enterprise is, which is what Luba uses as an equivalent to the commercial farming. Operation definition. And the commercial agricultural enterprise must contribute in a substantial way to the area's existing agricultural economy. And help maintain agricultural processors and established farm markets. In answering these criteria, it is necessary to ask the question, would the loss of this farm negatively impact any other agricultural processors? Or farm markets or negatively impact the area's agricultural economy? And in staff's assessment, this answer is no. In summary, the appellants documentation and testimony do not support their assertion. That they utilize the land primarily to obtain profit. The appellants' activities do not rise to the level of a farm operator and property owner who gain the majority, if not all. Of their income from managing a farm use and who intend to concentrate their activities on the land to create that income. They do not rely upon this farm for their income. The next item is, does, is live on farm help required? Staff concludes it is neither necessary nor essential that the relatives live on the farm. To provide support to farm operations on subject property. Clara Fulcher and Kevin Fulcher already provide supplemental help to the farm operation and live within a fifteen minute drive of the subject property. The appellants also rely on help from neighbors, other community members, a local veterinarian, and a part-time employee. The appellants have invested in modern equipment and built new irrigation, fencing, and buildings. All these items decrease the requirement for repairs and upkeep and decrease time spent in farm operations. To reiterate, the appellants also do not rely on this farm for their living. Cattle operation and the hang operation could cease tomorrow and the appellants would continue to rely. On on their retirement savings to support their quality of life. The applicants have submitted comprehensive documentation supporting their request. The applicant's agents have also submitted supporting documentation. While the appellants and their attorneys do not agree with staff assessment, staff's assessment, the appellants may not simply substitute their own definition. Of a commercial farm operation or the term required. Information supplied with the original application and on appeal, including business plan information submitted in support of the appeal. Does not, and this was um. I noticed there was a little bit confusion on page four of the staff memo to two words were missing. And those two words were does not. So the appeal does not cause staff to revise the decision to deny the application. We recommend that the board of county commissioners uphold the planning commission's denial of the appeal. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. All right, the next up, the. Appellants will then uh, it's a new word for me. Appellants will then present uh their case. And and if more of you want to come up to the microphone, that would be. Fine. I'm sorry.
Yes, please. Good morning, Chair Malone, uh commissioners. My name is Mike Reader. I'm an attorney uh out of Eugene. I'm at three seven five West Worth Avenue, suite two oh five uh in Eugene. I practice land use law throughout the state of Oregon and I've done so for about eighteen years. I represent the applicants, appellants. For simplicity, I'll just call them the applicants for this relative farm help dwelling application. Uh with me uh is Andre Phelps, who is an attorney who also represents the applicant's appellants who uh we. Are representing them jointly. I'll be uh testifying today to talk about this appeal of the planning commission decision and also respond to the comments that you received today. From staff during their oral staff report. I've provided you a copy of uh my memo. To you and the reference to the record to the packet is the packet that has three hundred and four pages. That was online last night, so I'm not sure if there have been any changes since then. If there are, I apologize. But I'll provide uh I'll provide you citations to the record to help us in our ease of discussion. The first thing that I want to um describe to the board is a, it's a concept that sometimes this is difficult for. Governing bodies to grapple with because governing bodies such as yourself, you're used to making final decisions and you're used to making. Uh legislating. Uh the state statute for clear and objective standards for housing development is found at O R S one ninety seven. Three uh three oh seven sub four. And I want to talk about this for a minute because this state statute applies to this application. You didn't hear very much or if anything from staff regarding the statute, it's almost ignored in the staff report. And to the extent that it is discussed, it's discussed erroneously. So I'd like to discuss this before we talk about the actual operations of the farm. Relative farm help dwelling for the is for the development of housing, therefore O R S one ninety seven, three oh seven, sub four applies and it states. Except as provided in subsection six of the section, a local government may not adopt and apply. Only clear and uh may adopt and apply only clear and objective standards, conditions, and procedures. Regulating the development of housing, including native housing. Luba and the courts have specifically held that counties must adopt and apply only clear and objective standards for housing development. Any standard that is not clear and objective must must be waived. They cannot be applied. Including these two standards that we uh will discuss this morning. Uh so this farm help dwelling application is subject to only clear and objective standards. Now, I've identified for you some standards and criteria that are in the code that do apply to relative farm help dwellings. They include the fact that the dwelling must be on a lawfully established water parcel. We don't disagree that that's clear and objective. They uh it's subject administrative review, that's clear and objective. Um it must be located on a property used for farm use. Again, farm use is defined specifically in the Benton County Code. So we would argue that that's clear and objective, et cetera. A relative must occupy the farm help dwelling. That relative is defined in the code. It's very clear, it's objective. We we can understand when we meet that criterion for approval. There are two standards, however, in the code that need to be waived. And those are two standards that are issue at issue in this appeal. The first one is, does the farming. Operation rise to the level of commercial farming operation? And number two, when is the relative's assistance with the management of farm use of the existing commercial farm operation required? And the the term there is required. So I want to be exceptionally clear here. The only two issues that this board must decide is whether or not. A commercial farming operation standard is a clear and objective standard. And whether or not the term required in the context of this code is clear and objective. And I will explain to you why they're not. If they are not clear and objective, if this board agrees with that, that can be the end of your discussion. You can approve the application because there are no other standards for which the planning uh commission or staff denied the application. We just have these two issues. So. Let's talk about commercial farming operation. In the most recent staff report uh dated February eighth, uh staff attempts to interpret what constitute commercial farming operation. This latest attempt is inconsistent with prior interpretations, which I'll discuss here briefly later on. And also uh staff uh begins by citing the statutes to farm use. And and that's fine as far as that goes. The farm use statute is a good place to start. However, that doesn't, that does not end the analysis. The question is, is does the farm use? No, no one is, no one is arguing that this property is not being used for farm use. The question is, is does it rise to the level? And staff says that the applicants only identify two farming operations. That create a profit, breeding Dexter cattle and raising hay. Other farming activities on the property include horse boarding for personal use, an apple orchard, and a vegetable garden. The applicants do not utilize the land primarily to obtain a profit, nor do they rely on this farm for their income. And you heard that again this morning. They live on the property to enjoy its beauty, enjoy a rural lifestyle and the opportunity. So let's break this down a little bit because this is erroneous and in many respects. The first is the staff got the number of farming operations incorrect. Uh staff incorrectly determined that the apple orchard was not a farm use when the statute specifically says that apple orchards are. The fact that they, the my clients uh in in uh the past have donated that the apples to. Uh charitable organizations doesn't make it not a farm use. In fact, uh they were able to deduct the value of that. Uh in their taxes, their business taxes. So it by by statute, the those um uses are a farm use. And the second is is that the agricultural uh equipment is. Uh the maintenance and the use of that is a farm use as defined by the statute and by the code. So there's actually four you uh farm operations. In this commercial farming operation. In addition, staff ignored the fact that uh the number of distinct farmer uses. I'm sorry, I, the the fact that the farm uses are subject to interpretation that it rises to the level. Is by itself an indication that this is not a clear and objective standard and therefore it must be waived. Staff states that the applicants do not use the land primarily to obtain a profit. Again, staff is incorrect. The evidence in the record, such as the business and marketing plan, which was not discussed in any detail by staff this morning. Is overwhelming that the primary use of the property is for commercial farming operations. But again, the fact that the staff is inserting primarily into the analysis. As such a determination is inherently subjective. Meaning that this provision cannot be applied. You have to make a, there has to be some weighing and some balancing of whether or not. The use on the property is primarily for farming. That's a judgment call. What, and Luba and the Court of Appeals have said, when you're making a judgment call, you are exercising discretion such that the standard is not clear and objective. Now, let me give you an example of where the county code could be clear and objective. The county could, you could legislatively adopt legislation for relative farm health dwellings that provide a clear and objective standard for when a commercial farming operation is a commercial farming operation. You could use an income requirement. You could use acreage. You could use a combination of the two. Now, I'll talk about the safe harbors identified by Luba that were discussed this morning. But the fact of the matter is the county has not adopted in their code those safe harbors. On page four, I say fourth, staff suggests that the applicant does not rely on the farm for their income. Reliance on the income from the farm is nowhere found in the code. That is made up by staff. Staff is inserting a provision in the code that is not there, and that's in violation of state statute. Perhaps more importantly, staff is attempting to interpret methods to support an interpretation of commercial farming operations, and as such, staff is doing precisely what the clear and objective statute says they must not do. Staff's characterization of the motivations of the applicants' farm use is not only woefully incomplete, but totally irrelevant and not supported by the evidence in the record. Without citation to the record to support such a statement, staff suggests that the applicants live on the property to enjoy its beauty, enjoy a rural lifestyle, and the opportunity to remain active in retirement, part of which is learning farming techniques and applying them to the property. But the applicant's activities do not rise to the level of a farm operator who gains the majority, if not all, of their income from the managing of farm use and who intends to concentrate their activities on the land to create income. This statement is a half-truth designed to camouflage the criteria in which the application is to be judged. Neither the, neither of the applicants have employment outside of the farm. It is true they have retired from other professions, but that does not foreclose the ability for them to have a second profession, which in this case is commercial farming. The fact that they use retirement funds to use, use those funds as capital investment on a farm should be encouraged, not discouraged. The county has yet to legislatively adopt clear and objective standards for this particular provision of the code. Now, let's talk about the safe harbors that were brought up. Yes, Luba has, has in the past dealt with the question from other counties about how to determine whether a farm operation rises to the level of a commercial farm operation such that you can merit a relative farm help dwelling. And those safe harbors are just that. They're safe harbors. They allow, but not do not foreclose, they allow for relative farm help dwellings that meet those clear and objective criteria to fit within one of those three buckets. But in the Richards case that's provided in, in the record and in my, in my notes here today for your consideration, Luba has held out the fact that notwithstanding those other three safe harbors, the county can approve a relative farm help dwelling when the scale and intensity of the farm use rises to the level of a commercial farm operation. So the fact that Luba has used clear and objective standards for these three safe, safe harbors does not make the county's code clear and objective because there are other ways in which the county can approve a relative farm help dwelling. And it's interesting, it should be noted that staff actually recognized this that the scale and intensity prong or the, the path to obtaining a relative farm help dwelling in the original staff report. But as time went on, that scale and intensity analysis was nowhere to be found by staff or at the Planning Commission. So on page seven, I talk about, I introduce the concept of the term required. So the question is whether or not the farm operator requires assistance. The question is not, is it required for the, i- is the farm help the relative, does the relative need the housing? Right? So, so staff talks about the fact that the Foulshers live fifteen minutes away. And so therefore that should be, you don't need a relative farm help dwelling. That is not the standard. The standard is not whether or not they need to come. The question is, is whether or not the farm operator needs the help. If the farm operator needs the help, then it is assumed that they get, that the operator can, or that the farm help dwelling is approved. It's a, it's a totally backwards, and they're, they're inserting something that is not in the criteria. And we think that this is discoloring their view of this application. So the, on page eleven of the, of the record, staff attempts to argue that required in the context of this code provision is easy to understand without the need to resort to a dictionary. Okay, that, that is completely false. Staff resorted to a dictionary. They looked at a dictionary definition. They have looked at the dictionary definition in previous applications. So i- it's, it's clear that this is not a clear and objective standard. They went to the dictionary. If the term required was, was defined by the code or the statute, then perhaps staff would be correct. You could have a code provision, the defiance required. The county does not. Oregon courts require that words in common usage, and I would suggest that required as a word in common usage, be interpreted with their plain, natural, and ordinary meaning. And the way the courts say that you find that is by going to the dictionary, and courts generally prefer the Webster's Third New International Dictionary. So the problem that we had early on was staff interpreted a case, a Luba case called Luke's. And in that case, Luke's was looking, the, the Luba was looking at a different county's relative farm help dwelling. And in that case, the code, the county code said that it had to be necessary. Okay, so early on, staff suggested that required means absolutely necessary. And they, they cited to the Luke's case. That was an incorrect citation. You don't have to go to the Luke's case because that was a different county code provision. Our code provision says required. So you look at the, the county code definition for required. It's not there. So then you look at the dictionary. The fact is that the term required is ambiguous when you look at the context. And therefore, it cannot be used to deny, to deny this application. Next, staff suggests that since the farm help live within fifteen minute drive, the subject property, that the relative farm help dwelling is not absolutely necessary, but that's wholly unsupported, as I said earlier. Under staff's interpretation, no relative farm help dwelling would be required because theoretically every relative could find another place to live off-site. Relatedly, how far away would be, would be too far. So staff is suggesting that fifteen minutes is close enough. Well, is half an hour, an hour, two hours too far away? That's a subjective call, and it cannot be applied in this case. Then there's the question of staff shifting their definition of what's required. And we, we raised this with staff, and the staff report basically does the shuck and jive and says, well, other past decisions have different facts, and so therefore we don't have to apply our, our reasoning in the last decisions to this one. Well, that, that could be true if the facts were at issue, but the, what's at issue is not necessarily the facts. It's the law. What does required mean? And in the in, in the, in the record, we see that staff has consistently defined requires as something less than absolutely necessary. And they turned to the dictionary to do that. They actually provide a third dictionary definition. And I'll get to that in a moment. That's in the in the LU twenty one oh six five, and that's at the record, page two forty four. So on page twelve of the, of the record, the staff states that while the appellants and their attorneys do not agree with staff's assessment, appellants may not simply substitute their own definition of a commercial farm operation on appeal. This is disingenuous. We are disagreeing about what the standard is and how to interpret it. It's disingenuous to say that staff has it right when there is no stat, there is no definition in the code. So let's talk about the Roberts case. So in a memo dated October twenty fourth, county council agreed with the applicants that the clear and objective standard applies. But then he argued that the standards of required and what constitutes a commercial farming operation are clear and obje, are clear and objective. And he cites the Roberts case. The problem is that the Roberts, well, the, the problem, the solution is the Roberts case is on point, but the Roberts case actually supports our, our application and our interpretation. So on page nine, I, I explain how Roberts interacts with this particular application. Roberts says that you can't, you can't create ambiguity of a term out of whole cloth. You can't just take a, let's, let's use required as, as an example. You can't say required is ambiguous without looking at the context of the statute or the ordinance in question. And so we, we don't disagree that Roberts was correctly decided. Roberts actually, if, if applied in this case, support our conclusion that in the context of a relative farm help dwelling, required doesn't mean absolutely necessary. It means it has a much lower standard and a standard that has been abided by staff in at least four other applications that we're aware of. So an example of something that's absolutely necessary or is required as interpreted by the county is oxygen. Everyone needs oxygen. It's required to live. Okay, it's required to make payment for the application for a land use application. Otherwise, the county is not obligated to, to process an application. It's absolutely required. But that's not what required means in this particular case. Required means to call for as suitable or appropriate for a particular use. And that is the standard that the county used in at least two other cases that we cite. Lastly, it's important to understand that even with the clear and objective statute that applies in this case, there is another case from the Oregon Supreme Court from nineteen sixty one called Lane County versus R.A. Heinz. That case is particularly important. It's never been overruled. It's never, there's no question that this is still the law of the land. And what this case says is that when you're talking about land use regulations, it says on page nine, the middle of page nine, the court held that interpreting the language of the ordinance to determine the extent of the restriction upon the use of property, and here we're talking about a restriction on the use of property, the language must be interpreted where doubt exists as to the intention of the legislative body, and I would emphasize this, in favor of the property owner and against any implied extension of the restriction. So even if you didn't have the clear and objective statute apply in this case, which you do, we still have a Supreme Court case that requires that these applications be judged with clear and objective standards. And when there is a question of whether or not the, which interpretation is correct, the tie goes to the property owner. Okay, unless it, unless it violates common law, and there's nothing that I'm aware of that would suggest that this would violate common law. Okay, bottom of page nine, I'd like to respond to staff's analysis of the new appeal. So on page eleven of the record, staff acknowledges that the applicant provided to the record prior to the Benton County Planning Commission decisions. I'm sorry. The planning, the, the, the Planning Commission did not have the benefit of seeing these other decisions for other relative farm help dwellings. Okay, we've provided them into the record for your benefit. We didn't have them. They were not discussed by staff during the administrative review of this or during the Planning Commission. But through a public records request, the applicants were able to obtain these. And the fact of the matter is, these applic, these other decisions are supportive of the application. But the Planning Commission, we didn't have time to get that in front of the Planning Commission, so they don't have that. But it is in the, it is in the record for your consideration. So on page ten, I exhaustively go through these. Okay. So in the four-tier application, Benton County approved a hazelnut farm that had zero income. The property subject to the four-year application was forty-eight acres in size. It's difficult to see, if you look at the, and this is all in the record, is if you look at the four-tier application, it's difficult to find an application that has any more bearing on an application factually than this one. So Benton County has also stated that the eighty thousand dollar income is a subjective standard and that you can be a commercial farming operation, even if you don't meet the eighty thousand dollar threshold. That's the Bricker application. And, and I think a merits talking about the Bricker application, because the Bricker application says the closest definition of a commercial farming operation is from the Oregon Administrative Rules definition for commercial agricultural enterprise. This is a non-specific definition that has been further developed by a decision in two thousand nine. That's the Richards case that I talked about earlier. That's an admission by the county that this is not a clear and objective standard, despite the fact that there are three safe harbors available to an applicant. Benton County told the applicants through conversations with D L C D staff that the county could take into account investment for farming practices that are long-term, such as cattle and fruit trees, and that such a determination is subjective. And that's an email from Ms. Williams to Paul Spies dated April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Benton County approved applications based only on a statement from the applicant that help was required, and that's the four-tier application. Benton County defined requires as need for a particular purpose, just as the applicants in this case have, and not absolutely necessary, and that's the Bricker application, which states the applicant indicates that the dwelling will be used by his son, whose assistance is required to operate the farm. Emphasis, one dictionary definition required for this purpose is, quote, need for a particular purpose. The applicant verbally indicated that his son is, is required more as he is aging and has stated how his son assists him on the farm. And it's interesting that in that case, staff cites to the Luke's case, Luke's versus Jackson County. And they, and, and staff in that case, Benton County staff in that case said that necessary, as used in the Luke's case, is different than a term required in Benton County's code. I cannot understand why the same analysis has not been applied in this case. There is no explanation for that. And lastly, let's talk about the merits of the case. Okay, so I've talked, generally speaking, about the fact that the clear and objective statute requires that you waive these two, these two standards that are not clear and objective. But even if you didn't, this application meets the standards of the code, even though they're, they're subjective. And staff has not addressed the additional information that's found in the code, and I will, I will point you to it. It is found beginning on page. Let's say page two fifty-three with the exhibits. And, and I call your attention to page two fifty-seven of the record. And this is a letter from Andrew Altishen, Program Manager for the Oregon Seed Certification Program for the Oregon State, for Oregon State University. And I'll just cite one portion of this letter. It says, through this process, we have been able to increase their yields, there meaning the applicant appellants, by a factor of five. So the hay. by a factor of five. So the hay, the hay crop has, the yields have have increased by a factor of five. And this was on 20% of their land and became a large burden for them to handle requiring assistance from others. As this farm continues to expand and increase the yields on a much larger portion of their property, they will need additional help to maximize their yields, reduce the impact on the land, and ensure that environmentally responsible and sustainable farm practices are followed and to ensure the safety of their workers. And I'd also call your attention, so that's the only expert testimony in the record. But if you go to exhibit E, starting on page 289, you will see that the applicants have provided the county with a robust explanation of their business plan year by year, starting in the year 2015, and have described the the farm equipment purchase, talked about the their methods of farming and their their desire to increase yields and to increase productivity. So much like the other case that I referred to you, the hazelnut farm, which produced no income, this is a farm that is getting up off the ground. Now, the farm use definition says that it's for the purpose of obtaining a profit and money. It doesn't say that you actually have to make a profit. Many farms do not make a profit year by year. Doesn't mean that they're not commercial farming operations. Just means they're not making a profit. And if anybody remembers the 80s, there were a lot of farmers not making a profit. We're getting foreclosed on. It still happens today. So that is just an absurd notion that you have to show that there's a profit every year. And in the hazelnut case, farm case, there wasn't, there wasn't an income at all, because it takes years for the hazel nuts to 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 come into fruition. So these commercial farm business plan also shows future projections similar to the hazelnut farm that the clients, my clients have provided you on page 304 of 304. On the bottom, it says, we project eight cows will be used for the purchase to for the purchase of life beef shares in 2024. This is the third to the last paragraph. The cut and patch packaged weight of a Dexter cow is estimated between 300 and 500 pounds. We estimate each cow will yield a value of 3,000 to 5,000 for gross for gross car shares with an income of between 30,000 and $50,000. Our hay production is for two purposes. First, to supplement our herd with the same nutritional cleanliness and quality as they enjoy in our pastures. We want to control their food source rather than bring possible contaminants into their diets from the outside vendors. Last paragraph, we anticipate hay yields in 2024 to be 125 tons. With quality grass hay, price points are between 290 and $300 per ton. We estimate our herd count in 2024 to be 19 head. Each cow will consume an average of 20, 2,000 pounds of supplemental hay per year. Therefore, the entire herd will consume about 19 tons. In 2024, we estimate that our hay sales gross income to range between 30,000, $35,000 per year. So if you if you add together the, similar to the hazelnut farm case, they will project in 2024 to be over $80,000. Again, my point is not that they will hit $80,000. The point is, is that this is a commercial farming operation for the purpose of obtaining a profit and money. And it's, it is disingenuous to suggest that 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 they're living on this property simply to enjoy the property. Okay, lots of farmers and ranchers enjoy the property in which they use for commercial farming operations. That doesn't, that does not negate the fact that this is a commercial farming operation. We want, we want to encourage farming. Goal three of Oregon State Way Planning Goal is for farming, is to to encourage farming. So why we would try and discourage farming and discourage people living on the land for that is something that I can't understand. And the cases that I've provided to you show that Benton County has done that. They've been reasonable in the past. We do not understand why they're not being reasonable in this particular case. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to to answer them at this time, and then I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Is this property located within any urban growth boundary of an incorporated area?
No.
Okay, thank you. Yes or no, the farm is or is not making $80,000 a year in profit?
No, it is not.
And I believe the acreage is 64 acres, correct? Not over 80 acres. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, I, I just, I want to share with you that, yes, we do have legislative decision-making. But we also have a lot of quasi judicial decision-making as well, so not to worry.
I would, I would just say other jurisdictions don't like being told that state law has preempted their ability to make decisions in quasi judicial considerations. I I trust this body isn't one of those. Thank you.
All right, next up, testimony for those in favor of this appeal. Okay. All right, any testimony for those in favor of the appeal? All right, then we'll go to testimony from persons opposed to the appeal. Is there any testimony from persons opposed to the appeal? All right, testimony from any representative of any other government body. All right. Rebuttal by the applicants.
Typically, I don't know if you were going to ask the, if if county staff was going to supply additional testimony, then we would reserve the right to rebut any testimony from county staff. If they're silent, then there's really nothing to rebut.
May jump in with additional information for the board.
Well, in that case, yes, there's nothing to rebut. Thank you.
The option of asking staff if they have anything to add.
Does our staff have anything they wish to add at this point?
I have a question about clarification of the law. My understanding was that the clear and objective standards were not, didn't prevail in this instance, but they did apply within the UGB. And that they are really pertinent to housing decisions and expansion of housing rather than any kind of additional housing on EFU land, which is governed by goal three.
For asking the question, I'm going to turn to County Council for questions about the law.
The answer is, if the housing standards have been applied by the courts outside the UGB. It was not originally applied by jurisdictions. However, a case was appealed and the court has said, yes, the standards apply inside and outside the UGB. So it has far ranging impacts, obviously, particularly rural counties with a lot of resources and land.
A lot of what?
Resource land.
So I close the.
Darren is sitting here. If you have any questions, he would love to answer them.
I guess there was mention of the planning commission, which rejected the appeal. Do you have anything to add? Some of this information came in apparently after the planning commission had had their deliberations. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. This is a DeNovo hearing. So on appeal to the Board of Commissioners, the applicants can provide more information and testimony, which they've done. You have that in the packet. We reviewed that at the staff level and determined that the additional evidence provided does not change our original decision.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. What are our options for continuing? Or basically deliberating and making our decision at a a future meeting, which would give us time to read everything that was presented today?
Yeah, thank you for asking. You heard Inga Williams say that the deadline, the extended deadline is March 21st, if I believe. So Benton County needs to make its final decision not later than March 21st, 2023. Otherwise, the applicants have an opportunity to basically file a writ of mandamus, forcing us, forcing our hands in this matter.
And it it has not been unusual for the Board of Commissioners to continue these hearings in the past. That was relatively common, particularly when they received new information. If that's the case, you clearly can continue this too. I think our next scheduled board meeting is the seventh. We make it two for two for your public hearings today to continue the second one.
That would be my preference.
I don't object to that.
Because this was a lot of material to go through and there were some questions raised. So I think that's reasonable to continue public hearing to our board meeting on March 7.
And a question about, since we have closed the public hearing part of it, can you refresh us on like ex parte contact?
Ex parte contact still applies. If expert contact bias, conflict of interest all still apply until you make your final decision. At that point, those those rules no longer apply because you do not have any action in front of you.
So for example, if someone were to email us with their opinion one way or the other, we would not want to.
Nope, immediately forward that on to to staff for inclusion, although I believe the record will be closed. I think that's something you can do as the chair.
At this point, right, okay.
Nobody's asked for it to be left open. And you blew your rebuttal chance.
Does that require a motion?
It does not. That's that's up to you.
Okay.
Just make it so.
I I will say that the record is closed on on this public hearing.
And we'll, if I understand you correctly, going to continue it to the 7th of March at 11 o'clock.
Yes.
At which point we'll resume for the purpose of deliberation.
And and like today, as close to 11 o'clock as we can, it won't be any earlier than 11 o'clock. Oh, thank you. We we have a fair amount to remind myself on that.
So can, could we do a consent calendar and then maybe take a break?
Certainly. So we will open the business meeting for store order of businesses, the consent calendar.
I will approve of the consent calendar. Second.
Call a favorite, say hi. Okay, and when we come back, we will be to item number seven, old business. How long a break do we need here?
Unless you want more.
Recording in progress.
We will resume our business meeting. Item number seven point one approval of twenty. All right. Start up the resume the business meeting, old business seven point one approval of twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Inga Williams, welcome back.
Thank you.
It's been a while.
Yes, too long. Um, in interest of time, you have my memo and I have no additional information to supply. So I request your support of the approval of the document.
All right. Well, maybe just a quick going over the history, we were about ready to do this last spring, I believe, and we were waiting for the state to do your wildfire risk mapping. And so that's been put on hold and so we're going forward with approval of plan. Have there been much in the way of changes since what we had last spring?
And the brisk map is now purported to be coming out the end of next year. So that will be incorporated into the document when that comes out. Until then, we just have, we have the existing map that we have that is in one of the appendixes of this document. So that's still, again, I don't believe there were that many differences between what the state came out with. What they will come out with and what we have existing, it's low risk to moderate risk for this county. We did have a few revisions that the Department of Forestry asked us to make to some of the wording. And the Fire Defense Board Chair had also asked for a few revisions similar to what the Department of Forestry requested. So we made those revisions and they went ahead and approved the document.
Any questions for Inga?
I guess my only question is about the appendix G, the strategic planning areas and projects. And just I'm making an assumption that that's a living document, that's not going to be static, that it'll be updated as we go forward over the next five years. In terms of evaluating priority and adding additional information.
Yes. And in fact, it will probably be updated fairly soon because we will need to start setting priorities. If funding, if we get funding, we be it grant or county funds or the state, we will have to figure out where to apply those.
And so what's the process for that? And will, is there an advisory body that will reconvene in order to do that? For staff level?
Yes, I mean, it would, it would consist of all of the fire chiefs, the Department of Forestry, probably Oregon State University, we'd have steering committee. And then we may also convene the full advisory body, which is the firewise chairs and some other interested public members.
Well, I appreciate the back and forth between you and O D F. The idea is to have a useful document that we can refer to going forward and make changes as as needed or additions to what we currently have. I know the state legislature is pretty active in the fire arena, reducing risk. I would assume come out with programs that we may be able to access because we have a plan. So I'm looking forward to putting this document into use. Any other questions or comments?
Nope, I'm happy to make a motion.
I would love one.
I move to accept the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty eight Community Wildfire Protection Plan as presented by staff and is approved by the Fire Defense Board and the Department of Forestry.
Second.
All the favors say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. This long journey has come to a close.
And just like that, yeah. Now the work begins.
All right, next up, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty three days zero three one six Development Codes Amendments Regarding Stormwater. Greg Verret's going to handle that.
Online looks like.
Yes, and joining me Gordon Kurtz of Public Works. On February seventh, board held a public hearing and conducted the first reading on these code amendments, which have been a joint project involving community development and Public Works and a advisory group that Public Works has has met with a number of times. So these code amendments again are necessary to comply with state requirements as well as to better implement our stormwater provisions here at the local level. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or to divert them over to Public Works, Gordon. But the ordinance is unchanged since your first reading.
Any questions?
I would move that we enact ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero three one six of ending the stormwater provisions for the development code and conduct the second reading of the ordinance.
Second.
All the favors say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Second reading, are you ready?
Yes.
For the Board of Commissioners of Benton County, State of Oregon, in the matter of amending Benton County Code Development Code, Chapter ninety nine, regarding stormwater ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero three one six. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows, short title amendments to Benton County Development Code Regarding Stormwater. This code goes into effect thirty days from today. Which would be the twenty third, since we have twenty eight days in February. After just a little rush.
You got it. I thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, thank you, and thanks, Gordon. Appreciate all effort and to get to this place.
Thanks very much. My pleasure.
All right, next up, matter of the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty three days zero three one seven Benton County Code Amendment Amendment Regarding Their Urban Growth Boundary. And once again, it's Greg Verret.
Good afternoon, again. So also on February seventh, you may recall, you held a continued public hearing and conducted the first reading of the ordinance to amend that their villages urban growth boundary. And no doubt, you recall having a joint public hearing with city council, accepting public testimony and reaching a decision at that time. Which led to this ordinance. So again, the ordinance would amend the urban growth boundary by adding two par- properties to the urban growth boundary, rezoning them from exclusive farm use to urban residential with a fifty acre minimum parcel size, which is essentially a holding zone until they are annexed into the city of Corvallis. I see a their village, excuse me, and that would be a trick. Into the city of a their village and and then they would be rezoned to city zoning and supplied with city services and developed at that time. So again, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Greg?
Happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move to enact ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero three one seven, amending the Adair Village urban growth boundary and conduct the second reading of the ordinance.
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second reading, second reading before the Board of Commissioners of Benton County, State of Oregon, in the matter of amending Benton County Comprehensive Plan and zoning map regarding the city. Regarding the Adair Village Urban Growth Boundary, ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero three one seven. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows, short title amendments to Benton County Comprehensive Plan and zoning map regarding the Adair Village Urban Growth Bound. This ordinance will also become effective thirty days from today, March twenty third.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Good job. We're moving right along here. Okay, next up is new business eight point one revised rank choice voting rules, James Morales.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. James Morales, Benton County Clerk. Almost forgot that part. Okay, before you today, I have revised the rules for implementation for rank choice voting for Benton County. Keeping in mind that any revisions that we make to the rank trace voting rules for implementation here. I would also take those to the city of Corvallis and ask that they to adopt the same rules or or at least tie to the rules that this this body enacts to ensure that we remain aligned as rank choice voting evolves. So the proposed amendments to our adopted rules are primarily to capture some of the functionality within the system that we have. And also to add some clarity as to how the process actually takes place. And in Benton County, as we've kind of learned over the the years, I think I learned quite a bit from the Corvallis contest this last time around that brought a lot of this to to mind. So going through the proposed changes, which were all additions to the the rules. Just defining what continuing ballots are. Those continuing ballots are what are utilized to determine the number that it takes to get to fifty percent plus one. So we're just clarifying what 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 that means and what we're using to, what number we're using for that fifty percent. Also clarifying on the round by round of rank choice voting returns to be to be to be clear that we're only going to be releasing those first choice rankings. And waiting until we have all of the ballots cast before we actually run the rank trace voting process. That is the next addition. Adding the definition of batch elimination as a process that our system utilizes when more than one candidate is mathematically eliminated from possibly having an opportunity to come out as the winner in the rank choice voting contest. And also just defining the winning threshold. That it comes from those continuing ballots identified. The final one, and this one really came out of, I don't know, I say I have one more that I had here. All identified in the green text as Commissioner Wise had identified in my previous presentation. So applying automatic recount for rank choice voting contest. I wanted to make sure it was consistent with the plurality voting method where the top two candidates. That the amount of votes those two receive are what is utilized to determine when you hit that threshold of one fifty one percent institutes the the automatic recount in Oregon's election processes. Now, if if we were to want to make this apples to apples, we determination and discussion with Bass was that we would want to use those first choice rankings because inherently what happens in the rank choice process is you keep adding votes to those candidates. And so the the bar lowers and lowers as you go through the process where you could potentially end up with hand recount processes that are required automatically by taking it all the way to the last round and then saying, okay, now that these two candidates are this close, rather than looking at how many votes they got in the first ranking. So I don't know if I explained that well. It's kind of hard to explain things in rank choice voting sometimes. So I'm going to be open to questions on that one right now to see if there's any questions about what I'm getting at with how how it would lower the bar versus plurality contest. plurality contest.
Any questions?
Any questions on that one? No? Okay, great. I was afraid I didn't explain that well. And the only the only other addition was just to be clear on that applying rank choice voting in the event of a tie vote was if we had two or more remaining candidates. I don't know why. Was that you, Vass?
I would I will add that when we originally implemented our rank choice voting code provision several years ago, we did, both James and I did caution the board at that time that we would be coming back with adjustments as we learn more and gain more experience. And I think the the clarification and the greater detail in these policies, the perfect reflection of the experience that the records and elections office now has and is able to actually articulate some of the elements of this process that I think intuitively they knew it did. But now it's important that people can actually have someplace to go and understand how it works behind the scenes.
Yeah, we're seeing some of these events actually taking place was not always possible, I think, at that point, you know, we had to, we had to experience it and and learn more by actually doing it to be able to come to this, where we now got these revisions that we're bringing forth.
So these are just policies, they're not embedded in any kind of code. Yeah, and I'm assuming also the familiarity with the software has made a difference because now we know what certain things are called, what processes are, and yeah, and we've encountered some of these very interesting moments of needing recounts.
That is difficult to test every possible scenario in a rank choice voting contest and being able to to generate those test decks don't always reflect what happens once you actually have an election. And I think that's one of the things we learned here.
Corvallis test.
Yeah, it was the Corvallis test.
Well, I guess my comment is I appreciate how you've taken this seriously. You did not raise your hand and say, hey, let's do rank choice voting. But when it was handed to you, you took it seriously and tried to plan ahead as much as you could on various scenarios and and now we're getting you're getting some experience and voters are getting some practice with this system. Maybe it's a little bit like our roundabout and on fifty-third and a lot of apprehension and now does this work? And with experience, it gets to be more more redeem, but looks like it is a work in progress and and but with is it correct, the the legislature is looking to perhaps apply this statewide.
That's correct. There's a couple of bills out there, primarily House Bill two thousand four, which our own Representative Ray Field has drafted and it is currently in the works at at the legislature. I I do, by the way, have a a meeting scheduled with Representative Ray Field to discuss that further with potential I guess, just administrative issues that might be present within that bill to see if we can get it to be a little more flexible. And if if they are going to pass a bill that we get something that that election administrators across the state will actually be able to work with and implement.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, it is, I think it's one of those things, oh, it's a good idea. And then you get into the details and then especially for you and your crew a little bit complicated. And I know there were some comments on the mayor's race last November, why is it taking so long and to get information and once again, we'll be able to get that information out ahead of time when this is, this is how it's gonna how it's likely to play out. And so to kind of match up expectations and reality is make is is a good thing. So, but really appreciate how seriously you've taken this and know as much role playing and theoretical scenarios and I think it's great that Benton County is has taken the lead in this. And if the state does decide to follow along, we have some good experience that we can pass around, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I appreciate that. Yeah, and I have been receiving a lot of requests for participating in different groups. I know that Portland recently adopted rank choice voting, which is going to spill into a couple of the neighboring counties over there. And so they have a lot of challenges ahead and they've asked me if I could look at what they adopted and provide them some feedback on that and lessons learned. And so I plan to do that as well.
Really? And I know we have got lost in the COVID shuffle, but there was a a pretty good attempt early on on the county's part to get the word out to potential voters, just remember some cute animals that were that you can vote for and and it is different and well, especially if we go statewide require you will be getting a lot of phone calls and emails and asking for Benton County's experience, so.
Yes, and it'll be beyond our experience if it goes statewide, you know, where the state will actually get in the business of tabulating votes, which like Maine and Alaska right now are required to do for rank choice voting. So it'll be interesting. It could be.
Yeah.
We'll see if it passes.
Any other questions for James? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to accept staff recommended revisions to the rank choice voting rules for implementation.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once. All right, next up, eight point two, Justice System Improvement Program Ballot Measure and explanatory statement for S E L eight oh one.
Okay, Vance, this is your show.
So this is literally the the last step in this in the in the odyssey that has taken us to the threshold of submitting our our measure to the Elections Office for publication and put for the voters in in May. So what you have for you is the S E L eight oh one, which is actually the let notice of the ballot measure for the election and it is submitted. Once we go through the publication period, if there have been no challenges and there's no changes, this, the language that's on this particular form is identical to what you've already approved two weeks ago in Form eight oh five. In years past, we have often submitted these forms at the same time because we didn't expect any real pushback. This time we felt it proved to sit tight on this to see if anybody challenged the wording on the eight oh five. At this point, I'm looking at James, there has not been any challenges and I'm not trying to knocking on wood. Not till we check this morning, there hasn't been the deadline is eight five, five o'clock. So that's what eight oh one would be, the the formal formal filing of the measure. Also, you have the explanatory statement, which is on page two seventy-three. And, you know, I don't need to go into depth with the explanatory statement. This board is probably as well versed as any Board of Commissioners I've ever worked with on election law nuances that relates to ballot measure. So tip of the hat to you three. This has gone through again lots and lots and lots of edits. It it reflects, I think, a truly collaborative effort on what is important to get before the voters in terms of explaining the measure in in words that the public can generally understand and use to help analyze how they wish to vote on the measure. So these two are for you for approval. And it's my expectation that if you approve these, I will file these on my plan was Friday, but it's on Friday.
And any questions? I I've got one, why does S E L eight oh five come before S E L eight oh one?
I think James is here.
There you go. It's all the state's fault.
And I like the term odyssey. Yes, I think that's appropriate. Are there any for questions on this?
I just have that one, one question, Vance, I had sent you that article from Salem about something that they Salem forgot to put in their language and then they had to go back and declare their whole.
If the bonds are approved, they will be payable from taxes on property ownership that are not subject to limits of sections eleven, eleven B, Article eleven, at one constitution. That sentence?
I couldn't remember which sentence it was, but I wanted to make sure that we had it in there.
Yeah, honestly, Zan, I I didn't always look at the original draft very closely, but I made sure this was in every version.
Thank you. Some of that obligatory language, yes.
There's no other questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
I would move to adopt approved S E L eight oh one and the explanatory statement as presented. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vance.
Yeah, yeah.
Just once again, recognizing all of the work that Nick and others have done, once and then this is a milestone. And we'd just like to recognize everybody for participating in that milestone, and Nick has got us across the finish line and he gave us a really good start on the explanatory statement. And then others shipped in, refined it, and I think it's probably one of the tightest explanatory statements I've ever read.
Yep, thank you.
And the odyssey continues. All right. Next, we'll have departmental reports and requests, nine point one, establish quality assurance position in developmental diversity program. Jasper Smith and Suzanne Hoffman. Take it away.
Hello, well, thank you. I'm Jasper with the Developmental Diversity Program. And we were just making a request because the the Office of Developmental Disability Services in the state of Oregon received ARPA funding to fund a number of projects that they need our local cooperation with. So they also passed some ARPA funding on to us to assist with those efforts. And we need to show that we're using those for that purpose by hiring a position to use the funds we've been given. So we did get approval from the Position Review Committee to create the position and have the position, but given current circumstances, they can only approve it as limited duration. And we would like to have it as a permanent position and we were planning on having it as permanent position and we expect to have long-term funding to have it as a permanent position. So we are here to request that this position be allowed to be a full-time permanent, not a limited duration when we advertise it.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I wanted to know, first of all, what does the QA Coordinator do? That title is big and broad and I just am curious about that.
Yes, it is very big and broad. We're basically divided up. We we have kind of services coordination coordination positions that do a lot of the the direct services, coordinating services for people in our community, helping them access housing and jobs and transportation, healthcare, all those kinds of things. And then those, we also have to have a separate group of positions that are are not direct service for just for conflict of interest purposes. And those are kind of all the administrative things. So quality assurance could include everything from foster care licensing to billing and payments to protective service investigations to just all the potential administrative aspects of our work. And for this funding, this this is for administering programs that the state is doing. So it has to be used in an administrative position like a quality assurance coordinator rather than a service coordination position.
Okay, so it's basically a support position that that will help bolster the team capacity, that's provide direct service.
Yeah, yeah, it's the kind of administer programs like the the state has has funding to put in new rate setting. So it'll be kind of, we have to put all those rates into an electronic payment system and bill on those. And so it'll be those types of positions rather than the kind of working face to face with people coordinating services.
And if we make this a permanent position, where will the funds come from in order to support it?
We get funding from the state every two years and it's kind of within what we expect to see ongoing. And we also can act, we 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 bill for services with the state and we can get kind of full reimbursement through our local match program. And these positions are within kind of what we can fund for local match.
Okay, so it'll it's just it this will bump up the continuing service level, basically, that the state provides.
Yeah, they they've already kind of given us the money and then we have to spend it before March of twenty twenty-five. So we need to kind of start a little bit earlier than we would have if we we wanted to do this position anyway. We just have to start a little bit earlier because we got money sooner than we expected. And we expect to get money later as well and keep the position later. The the state funding really just kind of moved our timeline ahead of what we were hoping to do anyway.
And commissioners, this position will be included in the budget information you see coming forth for the next biennium. CFO Rick Cragger has fully reviewed this and given his his seal of approval on the on the funding plan as well.
Great. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the creation of a permanent quality assurance coordinator position in the department, in the developmental diversity program and begin recruitment for potential hire date in April twenty twenty-three. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have another question for you, Jasper. Have you moved yet?
That's our our office is full of boxes right now and we're moving this week and we'll be in our new space at the Sunset Building on Monday.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. And we appreciate all your support with that as well. We we really appreciate moving into a space we can actually have a place for this person when we hire them. Which was one of the things that held back this position in the past is we didn't have the physical space to put them.
Well, excellent.
So thank you for your support.
All right, thank you. And now we are to others. Are there any other business that we need to discuss?
Well, unfortunately, I have a couple of things. I know we're running long, so I'll try to be quick. Number one, Suzanne sent an email eleven fifty-five, just letting us know that we need to pick a commissioner to be on the Intergovernmental Council for the Coordinated Homeless Response Office under H B four one two three. And I'm happy to volunteer myself since I'm on Hope.
I would be happy to have you serve as our point commissioner point person.
Okay, perfect. Should we make a motion or?
I I would I would move that we appoint Commissioner Wise to serve on Intergovernmental Council for Coordinated Homeless Response Office under House Bill four one two three.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you for saving me from having to do the motion myself. Okay. Thank you for telling me what time that email came in so I could read the language.
Thank you for squeezing that in, Commissioners.
You're welcome. The other thing is Brandon Persinger with A O C sent us an email on February twentieth. They are looking for it has to do with the Legislative twenty twenty three drought package. And they're looking for counties to provide I guess data on well needs, water insecurity, if wells are needed to be deepened or repaired, and estimate for repairs. I know that Benton County has not formally been in a drought, but I just wanted to double check as a board. Do we want to check in with staff and ask them if they want to have a voice or a say? And if so, will they reach out to Brandon? Or do we not think it's that big of a deal or?
It's been our Environmental Health Department that has worked on that kind of issue. And we still don't have an Environmental Health Director, but I would defer to
Because I think Suzanne and I
To Joe.
Talk about it and decide who that should be, who could follow up. Sorry about that, John. It's been one of those days, hasn't it? So what I would suggest about Suzanne and I talked about who would be best to to connect on that, if the board has an interest, we can certainly do that.
Sure, I I I'm interested that, you know, if staff decides that maybe it's not necessary for us, that's okay, too. I just wanted to bring it up. So I will reply to Brandon and just say that
Yeah, if you could.
Abort it and okay, perfect.
Include me, Commissioner Suzanne and Suzanne and I talk about it as one of our transition items to have that list.
Perfect. Thank you.
The only other thing I wanted to point out was that the Oregon Department of Forestry is meeting here in town on March eighth and ninth.
Yes.
And they are going to have a field tour on the ninth. I unfortunately have very full days those days, but it seems like it'd be worthwhile to try to attend. They want an R S V P by March fifth.
I I could see that. And I am interested in how I think that's possible on the for me on the ninth. I saw that last night. Five hundred pages or however many pages we have in the packet. That wasn't top on my list. So thanks for I didn't like that one. All right, anything else? We are due to Information Chair that we didn't have time at goal setting, but I think considering the lateness of that hour here, we will take that down down the road. Say with a hammer.
Well, all I can say is that I did share last time, but the two of you didn't have a chance. And I'm assuming that you must have some real humdinger stories from DC because you're so reluctant to share.
I don't know. Well, I, yeah, I don't know if I could even could have remembered everything, you know. Yeah, so it's all coming back to me now, but we can talk about it.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing about how a NACO conference went. Thank you.
With that, meeting adjourned. Thank you.